Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank everyone that is here today with us in council chambers, as well as those of us joining on via Zoom this evening. We will move along and open it up for our agenda adoption.
I would like to, Madam Mayor, pull out item C H two zero two two dash sixteen dash R until Planning and zoning has had a time to review that.
Okay, so the request is to remove under.
Under, yes.
Under the consent agenda?
Yes.
Item C, remove from consent agenda until planning and zoning has time to review.
Yes.
Then is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda with the amendment of removing item C under consent agenda? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. This time I would like to ask Councilman Bevanin to lead our invocation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. If you would, bow your heads and close our eyes. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us today. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to live and work in this incredible town you've given us. And, Lord, we just ask that in tonight's meeting, God, you will give us wisdom and clarity, Lord, that you will give us open hearts and open minds as we do the will of the people, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple special presentations this evening, and first up will be the presentation of the STAR Awards, and our town manager, Rob Donham, will be presenting that this evening.
And I'm usually pretty loud, so I won't get on the mic for this presentation, but it's awesome to see so many people here tonight. I know a lot of people are joining their family members here tonight for this award. The STAR Award is something that I really like. It's a great program of ours. It's something that we're proud of. STAR stands for, my eyes are getting worse, so if you see me pushing it away, you know what's going on, is special thanks and recognition. This is an award that's a peer award in our town. So this is, everybody here tonight has been nominated by one of their peers in the town, and this is for going above and beyond or some significant event, or just being a general pleasure to be around and really elevating the town. And we have nine submissions this year with a fire company in that submission. So I'm going to read out each nominee. When I do read out the name, we'll go through some Cliff Notes on why they were nominated and what the person that nominated them said about them. And at the end, if you'd like to come up here and stand, then we'll have an award for each nominee. Should I get that over?
For the most part.
Okay, alright, alright. Well, no, I think we'll come up and try to give a, I don't keep them up here, right?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Apologize, I wasn't here for last year's. I could have Lee come up here, maybe more experienced at this, but if I get anything wrong, please forgive me. First up, Craig Thomas, who is a senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. Where are you at, Craig? There he is. Okay, so the staff member who nominated Craig shared the following, that Craig works extremely well with staff. He exudes the utmost manner of professionalism. He goes above and beyond in his duties assigned in the department. He's vital in managing the department of the town, is an indispensable member of town staff. Craig embodies, this quote, Craig embodies the STAR Awards principles of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and promoting quality. Brian Faust. Brian is a maintenance worker within the Public Works Department, and the staff member that nominated Brian shared the following. Brian went above and beyond as a town employee in May when an F1 tornado hit Harrisburg. That storm caused severe damage, and Brian went above and beyond in the aftermath. Helped pull residents debris out of their backyards and help wherever was needed. He worked countless overtime hours and multiple residents in the town called him. Brian raises the bar every day with his professionalism and attention to detail. Linda Henson. So Linda's a customer service rep with the town, and the member that nominated Linda shared the following, and I think everybody that's ever met Linda would share the same things I'm about to read. So Linda's knowledgeable, intelligent, kind, and exudes positivity in everything that she does. Linda goes above and beyond to help residents and greets them with a smile whenever they enter the customer service area. She's personable and strives to recognize each resident by name. She's an example we all could learn from and shows integrity and pride in her job each and every day. I do kid on the block. Jeff Eisen, we're here. Jeff's been with us, shared a meeting. It's already been 10 months. Jeff's one of our newer employees in his first year, setting the bar pretty high, getting nominated as a STAR Award. So the person that nominated Jeff shared the following, that Jeff's an employee who leads by example, that he is professional and goes above and beyond to create a work environment that's positive and upward. His attention to detail and dedication to high quality will only help our town's utility departments to continue to be successful. So Pat's in EIT, Engineering Department, especially Marshall Pat since he was in the Engineering Department and brought him aboard. Special place in my heart, but the person that nominated Pat certainly had a lot of nice things to say as well. So Pat joined the town, there were a large number of misplaced utility lines in our GIS systems that the town crews used to do their daily work. Due to that system not really doing as accurate as it needed to be, it didn't allow our staff to operate at their full potential. And Pat committed to updating that system, and since he's been able to do that, the crews have been able to be able to be used to their full potential. And Pat's dedication to the project relieved many headaches with many people, and Pat had this project was one of high importance and sought to completion with great success. Matt Whitley. There he is. Matt's been with the town for 16 years. Matt is now a crew leader in our Public Works Department. The person that nominated Matt shared some things that I think everybody would also share with Matt, that I won't share all the embarrassing things that Matt Thomas can share. Matt is dedicated to the town. He's been here 16 years. He's consistently gone above and beyond and never settles for anything less than excellent work. Has a strong desire to execute every task with a high level of accuracy. Matt's attitude and determination to succeed continues to help the Public Works Department maintain its high level of regard. Next is tandem, so we have Mick Dawkins and Sammy Torrance. These two were nominated, and the person that nominated them shared the following stories. This was unique. Where in February, the two gentlemen here, Nick and Sandy, were having dinner with Ferris County EMS sixty-one, and while they were eating dinner, someone actually began to trip, and nine-one-one would have been much too far for these guys to be able to call and get a medic on scene. And what they did is jump into action quickly, efficiently, use their medical training, and were able to save somebody's life. So isn't every day that we get to brag about something like that, but this is a prime example of Harrison Fire's dedication, medical training, the dedication to each other, dedication to you. So now, last but not least, we have the STAR Award winner, John Rich. So before I brag on John, one more round of applause for everybody up here. This group of employees is incredible. I know each and every band employee up here, and I can really personally attest to all of our coworkers who personally attest to yours and your center here. So thank you, and I appreciate everything he does do on a daily basis. John, I've had the opportunity to work with as town engineer, as Public Works Director, engineering and Public Works Director, assistance, town manager, and so we've been able to work together in quite a few roles. And the staff member that dominated John admits over the following reasons. John stepped up tremendously in his job duties when there was an internal and John has been here a number of reasons, risen to those types of occasions. John recognized his co-work promotion. There's still work to be done in other kinds of organs. He stepped up by assistance. John follows through on all of his projects and ensures our communication is shared. He's an employee who is immense asset for town. He has the best of his business. I'll also say John had his own self, who cares about his people, who cares about his coworkers. And anytime that something needs to be done, John's the first. Congratulations, and STAR Award winner. Much deserved.
Congratulations.
You demand, so.
Yeah, Rob's got to get in here.
Congratulations again to all of our STAR Award winners this evening. A couple months back, Rodney Dellinger and I were at a regional stormwater partnership meeting and met Rusty Rozell and asked if he would come and speak. So Mallory is going to do the introduction for Rusty this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. While they shuffle out, I just want to point out that five of the nine nominations were in my department. And I only nominated one of them. So the rest were nominated by their peers, like Rob said. So yeah, glad we got to do that. That's a hard act to follow, of course, but we're really excited to, I'm really excited to introduce Mr. Rusty Rozell tonight. As a mayor had mentioned, I'm sorry, I have my notes on my phone. The town is a member of the Regional Stormwater Partnership of the Carolinas, and through that, we're able to work with other municipalities to extend our resources and maintain some of our permit compliance requirements for the state. Back in February, Mayor and several councilmen were able to attend the Regional Stormwater Partnership Elected Officials Workshop, and we heard from Mr. Rusty Rozell. He is the manager of the, he has managed the Mecklenburg County Stormwater Quality Program for over 40 years. This is part of the Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Services. The program is charged with protecting and restoring the quality and usability of the county's surface water resources. They partner with the city of Charlotte and the six towns in the county to comply with the Phase One and Two permit compliance. And he'll be talking to us tonight about water resources in the town of Harrisburg and why they are so critical. Welcome, Rusty.
Thank you.
So this will be your clicker for the month.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for letting me be here today. It's a good time, and I love hearing all the good stuff about your staff. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about water and really want to give a booster shout out to the work that you do to protect stormwater, protect your citizens from stormwater, because it can be very damaging and cause a lot of heartache. I'm going to start out by talking a little bit about why your surface water resources here in the town of Harrisburg are important, what's threatening them and what you can do as a town to protect them. And again with this, this is Harrisburg, and you can see that red area is on the left. You're receiving, unfortunately, water from Mecklenburg County, which is not exactly clean, and I apologize for that. To the north of the city of Harrisburg, we have Mallard Creek, and then to the south of the city of Harrisburg, we have Back Creek. And then below Back Creek, even further south is Fuda Creek, and then Mallard Creek and Back Creek both flow into the Rocky River, which kind of forms the town's western border. So that's a quick snapshot of the town's water resources. Okay, clicker. Ah, see. Let me back this thing up a little bit.
As a mind of its own some days.
Sorry about that. Okay, so your surface water resources in the town, like surface water resources all across Piedmont and North Carolina, were vitally imported into the growth and development of your town, and not for the reason you might suspect. A lot of, all the early settlers and early explorers that came into this region of the Carolinas noted that it was an area that had a lot of creeks, a lot of running water, and running water back in the 1700s and 1800s, when this area was being settled, was extremely important because that was a source of power, and people would build water wheels, and of course, the water wheels would turn grist meals that grind grind grain into flour and corn meal, and they were also used to power sawmills, cut lumber. They were the only source of power in the entire area. And a lot of the first meal, one of the first meals in this area was actually one that was run by a man named Mr. Farr, who's very important here in the town of Harrisburg, and it's Farr Mill, and Farr Mill was built on the Yadkin River, and it started in operation in the 1850s, and it continued up until 1933. And like most meals in this area, the town began to build up around the mill, because a mill was a large building. It had to be in order to house all of the equipment that needed to run the mill, the gears and so forth. So when the mill was not operating, the facility oftentimes is used as a public meeting hall. It was also used as a courthouse. And before long, around the mill here in Harrisburg, and a number of other structures grew up, including a general store that sprang up nearby, the Farr's Mill, and pretty much a lot of community formed, a community that later became known as Harrisburg. So the mill was sort of an integral part of the growth of the town of Harrisburg, and that's true of all the towns pretty much in the Piedmont, true in Mecklenburg County, and even in the city of Charlotte. So today, the surface waters aren't really providing power for meals anymore, but they're still vitally important to all of our communities, and that's because it's where we get our drinking water. So the city of Harrisburg gets its drinking water from Concord that gets water out of Lake Howell, I believe that's pronounced, which is north of the city of Harrisburg. And the surface water resource is so vitally important as a drinking water supply, because as we begin to urbanize, and Lord have mercy, city Harrisburg is really urbanizing. I'm telling you, it's one of the fastest growing areas around. And as you urbanize, well water, groundwater, it used to be our main supply of drinking water. I think Harrisburg still has a few wells within its town limits. I don't know how much they're used, but they're very quickly are going to not be adequate, because they don't supply the yield needed for an urban area like the surface water resources do. So the surface water resources, and so this is Lake Howell up there in that picture, and then that little inset picture is sort of the region. This is a Lebanon County region in and around this area in Mecklenburg County, and all the little red dots indicate all the surface water intakes in our area. And there are twenty-some odd of them, and the supply and drinking water are all over major municipalities. So the surface water resources are vitally important to not just city Harrisburg, but areas all around us. And the biggest threat to the surface water resources is urbanization. And basically, what happens is your population increases, you have increased urbanization, meaning you have more, you cut down more trees, and you put down more hard surfaces, you have increased impervious area, you have increased stormwater pollution, because anything that is dropped or spilled onto the ground, as you see in the pictures in the right, on the left, if you have a yard, when it rains in an urban area, the fertilizer and any pesticides, herbicides runs to the curb cut in the street and runs into a storm sewer catch basin, and then that storm sewer catch basin runs straight to the creek. So any fertilizer, any other pollutants that are in that stormwater will run straight to the creek. If you've got a parking lot, it's shown in the top right picture there, there's going to be a catch basin there, well water running through the parking lot runs into that catch basin, or grate, and it is passed straight to the creek. So that's one of the primary sources of pollution, if not the primary source of pollution in all of our surface waters in North Carolina. So this water contains bacteria, it contains heavy metals, pesticides, herbicides, nutrients, hydrocarbons, antifreeze, anything dripped or spilled onto that hard surface will end up into that surface water body. But that's, that's not really the worst of it. And the thing that is probably more impactful than that is the volume and velocity associated with that runoff. So if you take an acre of asphalt, an acre of trees here in Harrisburg, and you put an inch of rainfall on it, then you don't produce any runoff, because that water settles slowly past the leaves of the trees to the forest floor and is soaked up into groundwater. But if you take down that acre of trees and you put an acre of asphalt on it, as we're all doing every day, then what ends up happening is that same one-inch rainfall will produce 27,000 gallons of water, and it's almost impossible to see the magnitude of that. One inch of rain is not very much rain. I mean, we're probably going to get an inch of rain here in just a few minutes or more. So every acre of asphalt, rooftops, building, any type of surface that won't let water flow through it, every inch of rain on that surface produces 27,000 gallons of water. And the implications of that are huge, because that water, as I showed in the previous slide, it runs straight into a pipe. It runs straight into the creek, a creek that in an undeveloped stage was getting no runoff from that one-inch water. It's a natural system, it's been there for a very, very long time and existed under natural conditions, but now it's subjected to very unnatural conditions, this increased volume, the stormwater runoff. Not only there's more volume, it's also moving really fast, and what it ends up doing is it totally throws the hydrology of that stream off, and the stream begins to cut the banks and cut the bottom. It becomes very, very muddy, and even more importantly, it causes flooding, obviously, downstream, which is very devastating to any community. So it creates a very unstable environment. This is one of our worst creeks over there in Mecklenburg County. This is McDowell Creek, where a 14-foot section of creek bank was washed away from increased volumes and velocities associated with stormwater runoff. And it not only does that, it carries all this mud downstream. The sediment is deposited, and it destroys the aquatic life, the fish, and so forth that need those surface waters in order to survive. So it's terribly devastating. As a matter of fact, in the state of North Carolina, if not really, probably all across the country, these non-point source pollutions, the increased volumes and velocities associated with stormwater runoff are the primary source of degradation to our streams. So I wanted to give you, put it in perspective a little bit and talk about, I got to have my little sprinkles. My eyesight's so bad, I can't see the words up there. Sorry about that. I don't hear so good either, but anyway, we won't go into all that. So Back Creek in Mecklenburg County, of course, is on the eastern border of our county, and right now, as of 2022, it had 1,000 acres of impervious area in that watershed, the area that drains to that creek and then subsequently flows into the city of Harrisburg. And the runoff from one-inch rainfall will produce 27 million gallons of water. And if you put this 27 million gallons of water on a football field, trying to put it in perspective, it'd be 63 feet deep from one inch of rain. That's coming to you from us. That's not what you're contributing on top of that. Now Mallard Creek is much worse. Mallard Creek, it has over 6,000 acres of impervious area, and it's 25% built out or 25% impervious, whereas Back was 20% impervious. And runoff from one-inch rain there in that watershed will generate 165 million gallons of water, and that's equivalent to 384 feet on top of a football field from one inch of rain coming to you courtesy of Mecklenburg County. And every month, in Mallard Creek, we're adding about 12.1 acres or over nine football fields. And in Back Creek, we're adding 2.1 acres or about 1.6 football fields every day in those watersheds. So you're getting more and more water. And then when you combine that with the fact that Harrisburg is growing extremely quickly, 314% since 2003, I hope that's right. I got it off the internet, and you know the internet couldn't be wrong. And it's growing faster than 96% of similar-sized jurisdictions. So that is going really, really fast. In Mecklenburg County, we're adding three football fields of impervious area every day with development. And you're certainly not adding that much, but you're adding quite a bit. So literally, I can't get it. See, I age does do funny things to you. Okay, so your stormwater programs are essential for protecting your communities from the negative impacts associated with stormwater, and they're kind of, I got this guy here riding a surfboard, and I call him the stormwater program. Literally, he's kind of riding the wave, because that's what it is. You can almost think of it as a giant surge of water heading to your community through its creeks and waterways, causing all kinds of destruction. And of course, having a well-funded, well-maintained, well-staffed stormwater program with all the tools, including ordinances that it needs to protect the community from stormwater is vitally important, as I think you probably will know. And y'all have what's called a post-construction ordinance that requires new development to install structures to collect and treat stormwater and to try to protect the community from the negative impacts, and that's kind of at the very heart of the matter. So I would encourage you to make sure that is a good ordinance. Most jurisdictions just adopt the state minimum. You can go beyond that. We did in Mecklenburg County, and as you can see, we've gone beyond the state minimum. We're still not doing a good job. So anything you can do to bolster your ordinances, and really, it's always kind of been my philosophy that if you're coming into a community and you're developing, then you need to do what's necessary to protect the citizens of that community from the negative impacts associated with that increased impervious area, and I think that's vitally important if you're going to be successful in managing stormwater. So that's all I had. If you got any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
So Rusty, I certainly do appreciate you coming. I've heard part of this before, but I am so thankful that our other council members have been able to hear this, as well as our residents, as well as our planning director. Can you come back to the slide about Back Creek and Mallard, which shows 1.6 and 9.2? And that's per month again, right?
Yes.
So that's a lot. So I've asked you this question on a couple of times, and I'd like to ask it again so that the residents could hear it and other folks could hear it. If you take a development, where's the best point to capture the water in that development?
The best point is usually not the point, because it is collected. The best point to collect it is closer to the source. And if you collect it closer to the source, that minimizes the negative impacts and provides for much better treatment.
So that means heritage trees. I know one time you said heritage trees drink up how much water?
A lot of water. My memory's not as good. I don't remember.
So, you know, we clear clo, we clear-cut a lot of land development these days. So if we can save those trees. So if we can save those trees and let those trees and that point of entry capture that water. Because if we have one point six feet and nine point two feet. Of a football field per month coming into Harrisburg. From Charlotte and then we've got to add to that.
Yeah.
That is a lot. So I I just wanted to be sure that folks heard that, that the point of entry is a good place.
The honest is, so I've been doing this a long time and I've seen a lot of struggles with this because everybody wants to grow and develop. And everybody wants to attract good development and stormwater controls are expensive. But and and I've seen developers struggle for years trying to pay for it and object to it and all that stuff, but. I guess what you got to keep in mind is that. That development is going to be there forever. And and it is going to be causing negative impacts forever unless you do something to try to minimize it. So you got to really kind of think long term and. Stormwater just doesn't impact in a day. The impacts occur over decades and even centuries and they they can leave your community's streams void of life. And badly polluted if stormwater is not properly controlled. So. I I it's a hard sale, I know, because it is so expensive and and development is so popular here in the in the city of Harrisburg, but. Uh paying paying attention to stormwater and controlling it is so very important.
And I appreciate you saying that. And one more thing out of what you just said is. Talks about heritage trees, that it takes a long time for the tree that you plant today to eventually become a heritage tree.
Sure does.
Right?
Mm hmm. It sure does. Keeping trees, that means absorbing a lot of stormwater.
Thank you, Rusty. I really, really appreciate it.
Rusty, who is responsible when it comes to all the downed trees and that we see in the streams today? Does that, does that fall in the local towns? Is that a state? Issue? Where does that, who does that fall back on?
You talking about protecting trees?
No, the ones that have fallen over the years that are laying across these creeks and some causing dams and everything like that.
Yes. In Mecklenburg County, that's the property owner's responsibility. Now, it's, we do have as part of our stormwater utility. We have crews that can go out and remove major blockages. So we do that for the most part. If it's in a major stream and it's causing flooding, we will, but usually it's the property owner's responsibility, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Um I had a question for you. I remember watching a program and um that was specifically talking about. Um I think it was comparing Charlotte and Houston and it was saying like how Houston is constantly flooding as a city because they're not doing as. But as good of work maintaining creeks. So what does Charlotte do that is so good? Like, are they have the buffers around the creeks, like retain the trees? What are some of the ordinances, I guess, they have?
Well, we do have a a tree ordinance, uh a very stringent tree ordinance. Um we also have buffers along our streams that we've had now since for almost twenty five years. So we've been buffering the area along the streams. And preventing the development along in those areas, uh which keeps houses out of flood areas. Uh we also have a a very protective flood ordinance. We actually. We go beyond the FEMA flood map or the FEMA flood zone and we actually map to future conditions. So. We make sure that as the community grows and the houses are built, they're built outside because the floodwaters get higher. So we want the houses to build outside of what future flood areas will be. And this requires a lot of modeling, a lot of work, a lot of money. And we we spend a lot of money in that. And then the other thing that we do is. We have a lot of programs where we're mitigating for flood losses, uh working with people to raise their elevation, flood out their. Uh living quarters above the flood flood elevation. And we even have a program where we buy homes in floodplum areas and we actually. I didn't know if I'd ever see this, but we tear houses down, we tear businesses down that are in the floodplain. And we turn them into parks and greenways, which is so smart because it takes people out of harms way. And gives something to every urban area, which every urban area needs green space. So those are some of the things we do that. I think they're outstanding, really.
It provides the green area to absorb a lot of the water.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think I have the last question, Rusty, but first, thanks for, thanks for coming. This is, this is great. Um it's hard to captivate an audience with something like stormwater.
He is.
But with your experience, you you've done it well, which I know is why you were invited here uh this evening. So we do appreciate that. Um as you know, things move really quick in in uh. Uh in local government when it comes to stormwater and um I had actually just gotten a uh. An email Friday about a Senate bill that that's coming through. Um you may or may not have heard, you know, Senate Bill six eighty six, but. Um again, it's it's hot off the presses, but um one of the provisions that it says it would do is uh. It would amend the stormwater fee consideration and prohibit a fee for properties where stormwater control measures capture all the stormwater on the property. You're you're the, you're the local expert. How devastating would that be to local communities uh if they weren't able to charge a stormwater?
It's going to be very devastating. There there are several bills in the House right now that are. That are going to be very harmful to stormwater programs if passed and so. I don't know why the legislature does some of the things that it that it's doing. Um I'm not going to get political here, but. Uh stormwater is hard to control. It's very hard to control. It, a matter of fact, you could almost say it verges on impossible. When you, when you look at the volumes that we're talking about. And they never go away. Once you put the asphalt down, it's there forever. And and to take away what few tools we have. And make that makes it that much harder and and it's, it's very, very frustrating and. Um because we need all the help we can get from the legislature, not. Not taking away, we need putting back, but. I know they have good reason, but uh it that type of thing is very harmful to stormwater programs. And that they've got a number of of bills that they've got bills that are uh affecting bonding. Uh bonding BMPs so that. We can be assured that when the development is finished, there'll be money there to build it. When if the developer defaults, they're taking away some of that. And I understand they're trying to make uh areas developable easier for developers. But it's very easy. I mean, we got a lot of development and uh it's uh so anyway, yes, it's very damaging.
Well, I appreciate that insight and I don't mean to put you on the spot in a political context. Um but I I certainly know how devastating that'd be for Harrisburg. Um I assume you know how devastating that'd be for Mecklenburg County.
We've got our lobbyists up there. As a matter of fact, I went to Raleigh. To speak about two weeks ago, broke my heart. I won't pay you go into the details, but that's a maddening place there. It's. It's um, it's, it's very sad. Anyway, but it's it's tough. Thank you. I appreciate y'all letting me be here.
Thank you, Rusty. Appreciate you coming and sharing with us this.
Never again will I try to run two presentations at the same.
Did a great job. Did a great job.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
We will move into the public comment section of the agenda this evening. We did not have anyone sign up on the sheets that were outside. Um I will see is is there anyone in chambers right now that would like to speak during public comments before I move to the Zoom meeting? The Zoom callers. Okay, is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? Just raise your hand and we can. Get you hooked down. None. Okay, thank you. Public comments are closed then for this evening. Next, moving into consent agenda. Um just a reminder, we did remove item C at the agenda adoption. So is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as amended? So motion on the floor, is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion has carried. Next up, we have our communications updates and we will start with our town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um quick update this evening and I will save uh most of my time because I do have a significantly long presentation. This evening uh in our uh manager's recommended budget report, we'll address lots of updates there. Um but in addition to that, I did want to uh remind those that were in attendance and. As a reminder, for those that that weren't, our staff was able to present at the Cabarrus Summit. Uh this quarter where we presented on the fiftieth anniversary. Um past, present and future of Harrisburg. Staff did a tremendous job. Um staff, uh some, some who are here, uh Jim, April, Zach, I'm not sure if uh Kenzie is is here, but. Um uh those of you that that hadn't seen that, I'd be happy to send over. The presentation so you guys could take a look at it, but just wanted to again congratulate our staff. I think they really. Uh were impressive, served the town well and it was something that uh. I wanted to share with you this evening and brag on our staff a little bit because they did a tremendous job at that. So uh thank you, staff. And that's my uh only update for this evening, but I will take questions from council if you uh have any specific updates you'd like me to get to before the. Budget presentation.
I I have our questions. Did we see about uh replacement flags for veterans?
Yes, sir.
They seem to have taken up a lot of.
Okay. A little tattered?
Yeah, not, not so that chatter, there's dirty.
Okay. Some of that uh road grime that Rusty was talking about, sounds like so. Um yep, we'll knock it out.
Next up, anybody else have anything for?
Well, since he's asking for questions, I was going to ask about it and.
I I knew you, I knew you wouldn't miss the up.
I keep getting asked and I know we keep answering it, but the traffic light at the end of Stallings and Rocky River. You know, for because now that Harmony Acres has really come to fruition. So they keep asking, I know you keep saying, so that again, and then someone reminded also in that neighborhood. That there's going to be a fountain in that BMP. And uh reminded me and I had forgotten about it and they wanted to know when that was going to start.
So the the first and I'll try to, I'll try to answer um not with specific dates, but uh if Mallory wants to jump in here and help me. In a moment, I'll, I'll, I'll recognize her, but I believe the uh phase two is when. The traffic signal at um Rocky River and Stallings is is one of these. So is that, is that correct, Mallory?
We don't have any exact dates on when they plan to start phase two. I know they're eager to start it. But we won't let them record their phase two until they've got those offsite traffic improvements.
But it's very, it's very close, right?
I think they're pretty close. I mean, they're building out phase one, so I think it'll be sooner than later.
Okay.
And then as far as the fountain, that'll probably be once that phase one is totally built out because. It needs to be pretty well established. We don't want to put a fountain in where it's still a sediment pond. So once they convert it, they'll, they'll install the fountain.
Okay, thank you. So when you say phase two, I thought we had a number somewhere like twenty seven or thirty.
I think it's seventy lots and I'm, I don't, please don't quote me on that. I. I think fate, I think the offsite improvement's triggered at seventy lots and I can check and send that exact number in an email tomorrow. We have like. Six or seven developments where the phase one, two line is like between thirty and seventy, so.
Pretty typical, around sixty, so seventy sounds like a number.
I know, right? Seventy seems.
Thirty is a limit for a single entrance uh plat. Uh which is, which is also something that the legislature has before us to eliminate. Multiple entrance things which I'll uh share with you once I've dug into that a little bit more, but in that same Senate bill. Um it was eliminating local jurisdictions' ability to require more than one entrance and making it strictly fire code. So uh but that, that, that thirty number tends to be something that. That we remember in our mind as a trigger before you have to put your second entrance in. But may not necessarily be the phasing lines for a community, but usually sixty is right around that. That number.
Thanks, Mallory.
Well, I had a request there as well. Um I noticed a lot of students from middle school, Haker Ridge Middle and um going to Bridgepoint. So I wonder if we can look into um potentially installing a like a pedestrian. Traffic stop there, traffic light or some type of crossing so that they can safely cross.
Slow rider. Um yep, yeah, we can look into into that. Obviously, that's uh some DOT would have to approve. They would kind of have to pay for it. We'd have to pay for it. Uh but we can look at what those uh details look like and get back to them.
Any other questions for Rob before we move on to Brian? Okay, Brian, you are up. Brian Lee with our finance monthly reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, this is our finance report as of the end of April. So this is a look at our operational revenues and expenditures. Tax collections are up to ninety nine percent for the year and we have two months of motor vehicle taxes still to collect. So we'll uh tick just over a hundred percent on tax collections. That makes up about two thirds of the general funds uh overall revenue and that is also at about ninety seven percent for the year. So we're doing really well on our. Collections in the general fund this year. Uh the water and sewer fund has reached eighty two percent and the stormwater fund at eighty four percent. So all revenues are pretty much on target there. Um the bottom part of this chart here shows departmental expenditures operationally. So the first group here is our general government departments in the general fund. And other than council at twenty six percent, all the departments are in the fifty to about seventy five percent range. So um all the departments doing good there, no concerns uh through the month of April. This is a look at our remaining general fund departments and the enterprise fund. So they're all in that same forty to seventy percent range as well. Uh no real concerns noted here. Uh the water and sewer fund has reached about seventy percent expenditure utilization and the stormwater fund at forty three percent. And salaries townwide have gone up to about sixty eight percent as we said, eighty three percent of the way through the fiscal year. Now we'll move into our projects. This is a look at our uh single year projects, a couple that I want to draw your attention to. The station, fire station number one upgrades are up at eighty percent complete. The final project um is to repair and paint the walls on the interior of the building. And a quote has just been received for that, so that'll be in the works over the next several weeks. Lucas Court, uh we hope to have a little more progress to report on this than we do. I've had a little difficulty getting scheduled with uh the contractor. Um but we are still on track to have that done by June thirtieth and uh those residents have been notified along the way of the delays in the, in the project and uh when that should be done. Uh the pond improvements for Harrisburg Park are showing at forty five percent complete. Um as I mentioned last month, the water level has been raised on that. The landscaping and fountain have been ordered and should be uh installed before the July fourth event. And then we're holding off on the walking path construction until after July fourth so that we don't have kind of a construction mess left out there for the event. So that'll be the last thing that we finish up after the fourth event. Uh Orchard Park Pump Station upgrades. The contract was on the consent agenda tonight and that is now expected to be done by about September. And stormwater spot improvements on Oakley and Willow, as we just heard how important those are. Uh construction should start by the end of this month and last through July on that project. And we've moved two projects to complete. The street resurfacing Powellville paving. Uh has been finished up and the Stallings Park tennis courts have also been uh finished up. So both of those showing as a hundred percent complete. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are in design. So we have quite a few projects here. A couple that I want to point out are the transportation bond projects there. There's a group of four of them. They're all in the about eighty percent range for design and so we'll see some of those convert over to construction throughout the summer and later um this calendar year. And also Cabarrus Woods Waterline Phase Two, that we have moved down to on hold in the middle of this chart here. Um it is pending the completion of phase one of what the waterline project. And we're going to uh issue an RFQ and find a new engineering firm for this phase of the project. So that will also be coming your way. Uh once phase one is wrapped up. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are under construction. Fire station number two and training facility, the last item to be done there is the fence around the property. And uh that has all been worked out with the contractor and so that should go in in the next couple of weeks. The sidewalks and Highway forty nine corridor implementation, both transportation bond projects. Uh easement acquisition is still underway on those and we did bid out the Highway forty nine corridor plan. But did not get any uh any bidders. We had nine plan holders and no bidders. And the general comment that we got back was that the project was too small in scope for uh for them to bid on it. So what we're going to do is combine that with the Cambridge Drive connection over to Davis Creek. Once that engineering is done and hopefully the size of that project will be more attractive to those bidders. Uh so more to come on that project. The twenty one, twenty two water lines, additional stormwater work. The twenty one, twenty two water lines, additional stormwater work has extended the construction schedule there. Woodside is complete, school avenue is about seventy five percent complete and stormwater across the entire project is also at about seventy five percent. And then after the water lines and the stormwater is complete, resurfacing will come through and repave those roads. Any of the ones that have been affected by this project and that will really get that section of Harrisburg into really good shape as far as paving and striping over there. This is a look at our equipment projects, not too much movement on, on equipment and vehicles as we've seen throughout the year. The training room and video conference bar for the fire department. An update on that is that the video bar has been installed, but we're awaiting the projector to be delivered. And once that's delivered, it'll be quickly installed and placed into service. Here's a look at our vehicles. Again, not much movement here. The ladder truck has been delivered to the dealership here in North Carolina and they are mounting the equipment and we expect to receive the truck in June. So that's been a long time coming. Also, the brush truck for public works or as, as it's labeled up there, environmental protection has been received and placed into service already. We have a couple accessory components to add to it to, in order to move it to a hundred percent complete, but that truck is received and already been put to work. And lastly, our professional services projects, we have a new addition to this list and that is the fiscal year twenty twenty three financial audit. So we have begun our interim work and we will meet with the auditors in June and then that will carry through to September final work and have our financial statements submitted to the state by October thirty first. So a new project up there, the Strategic Economic Development Plan. The RFQ responses were reviewed by staff and interviews have been set up with those three firms to move forward with that project. So that will be moving forward pretty soon. And other things going on in the finance department, the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget is coming to a close for us. The budget season is at least with the public hearing tonight and hopeful adoption. That will wrap up the, the budget and give us a, a pretty good amount of time to implement that and start to plan for the next fiscal year. Audit, I just mentioned the twenty twenty three financial audits that we're getting underway there. We've also just completed a retirement audit of our 401K and four fifty seven B plans. And they, that was a really in-depth audit all the way from employee elections to personnel files through payroll and to funding of the plans. And there were no comments or issues noted whatsoever in the plan. So that speaks really highly to, to HR, to finance, to administration, anyone who has a, a role in in onboarding an employee and having them set up properly all the way to funding their account. So we're really happy with that. And then also an update on our ARPA funding. Total grant and interest that we've received so far of about five point three million. We have appropriations for the YMCA, the deputy office expansion that's been in place for a while, employee retention and sign-on bonuses and our fiftieth anniversary event and July fourth enhancements, which leaves us with about eight hundred and thirty thousand to appropriate by the end of December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And with that, I will welcome any questions.
So did you find somebody do the park master?
No. Yeah, that needs to be reissued. I don't think that that's quite been done yet.
So that percentage is going to go back down?
It probably, probably needs to be reset. Yeah, once that gets reissued.
Any other questions for Brian? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I made sure to note who was up first this evening and it is Captain Meesmer and he's standing up in the back. So we're going to let him come on up and issue our law enforcement update for the month.
Mayor, Council. I'll start off with the April numbers. In April, we responded to three thousand one hundred and fifty one and let me hit the little downward button. I can feel you glaring at me about it.
But it looks so good.
Three thousand one hundred and fifty one law enforcement related activities. Two thousand three hundred and nine security checks were checking your homes and businesses preemptively. Four hundred and sixty three traffic stops with an average response time of seven minutes and twenty seconds. We also this month completed all the distracted driving and DWI driving for the high school and the middle school is now completely done. Another thing I would like to bring up is the county paid an independent company to do satisfaction surveys throughout the county of all these different organizations. The Sheriff's Department, we rated eighty three percent in the county when the national average is forty five percent. So we ranked very high. Thank you. But it pains me to say this out loud. Lord have mercy on me here. Fire EMS and emergency management scored eighty nine percent. One, a couple of other things we need to bring up. Unfortunately, I have done my best to ruin this man's career and keep him in Harrisburg, keep him underneath my thumb where I want him to stay, but unfortunately he Shawshank me and tunneled under the fence and made it out of Harrisburg. Sergeant Edwards, feel step up here. Sergeant Edwards has now been promoted to Lieutenant Edwards out in the county and will be leaving Harrisburg and he'd like to say a few words. I've got him. I will miss him dearly and I'm betting ten bucks he makes it about twelve words in before he starts to
Twelve words. No, I just wanted to say real quick, it's been my honor and privilege for almost sixteen years to serve my hometown. So I appreciate the opportunities that y'all give me, working with the town staff, council. So real appreciate it. This ain't farewell forever. I do plan on coming back. So I look forward to when we see each other again.
Will we still see his football game?
I'm gonna try to be, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations. We're very excited for you.
Despite what he says, Lord have mercy on y'all.
It's okay. Alright, now his replacement is here. John, cause step up. This is John Creighton. I'll let him do his introductions and you may have noticed we also have a Rick Creighton, which is his older brother. And we also have baby brother who works in the school. So we have all three Creighton brothers working here currently. Two are in the town.
My name's John Creighton, Stanley County native, born, raised and locust. Definitely a family tradition, get into law enforcement, kind of follow brother's footsteps and, and followed him along and in two thousand and one, it led me into law enforcement. Started out of a small town out Stanley County, Stanville. Worked out there for the first nine years of my career and the last five out of nine, I ended up working as chief of police. So did have a little bit of administrative background, which kind of benefited me along the way. Did take a career change, went for, not a career change, but changed locations and went Concord Police Department in two thousand and ten. And worked up there until twenty sixteen, whenever I was made the right move and came to the sheriff's office. And I've worked the exception of the first seven months I've been a field training officer out here. Really tried to make a, a good positive impact on, on the individuals and I'm working with the other officers as well.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
My very first ride along with, was with your brother. So we're very happy to have you.
Continue to try to live up to Rick's image.
Thank you so much.
So with that, any questions for me on the law enforcement side?
I've got one question for you.
Yes.
And because Rob's going to give us this wonderful presentation, you may be asleep at this point, but when it comes up later tonight, we're looking at unmuffled compression brake ordinance. Any insight on that? Is it challenging? Is it not challenging? Is it straightforward? What's your thoughts on that?
I wouldn't say challenging. The problem you run into with those, we, in the time I've been in the town, I guess pushing four to five years now. And also checked with some of the other staff and we heard about it last week. To our knowledge, we've never actually had a complaint of people complaining about the AKA Jake brakes or engine suppression systems, et cetera. We've never had anybody call and complain about those. It can be enforced, but we would have to actually see it. Just because we hear it doesn't mean that the person will be in violation of it. For example, they're going down forty nine, somebody pulls out in front of them in QT. They're going to end up using that suppression system to slow down to avoid a wreck. So we wouldn't be able to do it just based off hearing it. We would have to physically see them and know that they had no reason to do it or to use that apparatus.
So when you say you see it, what would you see?
We would see them with nobody in front of them and they're going down the road and they come from let's say a forty five or fifty five to a thirty five and they haven't paid attention. They just want to dramatically slow their speed. That would be where I think the complaint would more or less come in when there was no necessary reason to make that loud noise. But like I said, we, if it has been a problem in the town, nobody's ever let the sheriff's office know or complain to us about it. But it can be enforced it, but it would require us to physically see what they're doing when it takes place.
Thank you.
I got, I got all the complaints instead of you getting.
Alright.
I got complaints from Morris Plaza and my, my, and on Morehead past the fire station. And we got it runs Arby's and Herb's Store. And our, our, that's been the last couple of years.
Have you ready?
Backwards, I was talking to Rob.
Yes.
I got, I got one of my, we should be using it on a thirty five mile XP. I use it on the access. I'm sitting on my back porch and I could hear.
Any other questions?
I'll send them to you next time I get a phone call.
Or I'll hand you ticket book either way.
I'm getting all the calls because I look right there. I can't tell you about it. Next time I get one, I'll just forward it to you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Captain Meesmer. Next up, we will have Chief Dunn with our fire department monthly update.
Following that comedy yet? I got to go first. Alright, good evening, Mayor and Council. The Harrisburg Fire Department's April recap. So some of our community outreach, one of the shifts that attend the Community Advantage Founder's Way Community. Another group attended the Hickory Ridge High School First Responder Night. I don't know if anybody else was out there. Some of our annual maintenance that we do required every year to keep our ISO rating. All our fire pumps were tested. Ground ladders, SCBA was clean and disinfected. And our fire hose was tested by a third party, which again, we do on an annual basis. As far as our April stats, our total incidents for the month were two hundred and thirty five. And as we've talked about in the past, the total unit responses and our total personnel count for those incident responses. Our average response time for last month was four minutes and seven seconds. As far as our percentages of incidents by the stations, you can see station one continues to be the busiest. With station three right behind them and then station two far behind station three. And then we have an incident count by unit. Again, battalion thirty one, engine thirty two, thirty three and thirty one. Again, a pie chart of our percent of incidents responses by incident type. Again, our, our rescue and EMS continue to be the biggest category. Most likely always will be. As far as aid given or received, again, did we go somewhere else or did someone, another agency come in and assist us? Or did we do it by ourselves? Again, seventy eight percent of the time we were able to handle incidents on our own. And again, aid given and aid received was about equal. As far as our heat map on our busiest days for the month of April, you can see roughly the second and the eighteenth were our busiest days of the month. For that particular month. You may have seen it on social media. One of the big fires of last, last month was at Weddigen Road and Highway twenty nine where we assisted City Concord along with City Charlotte. On a pretty large warehouse fire at that location. Our annual fire testing has begun, which also is a big part of our ISO rating. Again, crews will continue testing through August. And if you're, again, we tell people if your home is, home water is discolored, if you'll just please flush the water until it runs clear. If you have a heavy discoloration, the easiest way to do that is in your bathtub instead of in the kitchen sink or, or some other mechanism. Any questions? So real quick, I would like to address the social media posts. So just to be clear, that, that decision, the information came across my desk. I acted on that information, met with town management, proposed several different ideas. One was determined to be the best by me and that's the information that I put out to our staff. Okay.
Appreciate that.
If I get
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Just a couple updates. I will share the same sentiments that Rob mentioned early and thanking our staff that presented at the Cabarrus Quarterly Summit. That is really a great, unique opportunity for all of the leaders in the various municipalities in Cabarrus County to get together and it was great to see Harrisburg showcase for other folks to learn more about our events that are coming up. I was also able to spend the day at the Cabarrus Arena for the Special Olympics last month and we are very fortunate to have such a strong program in our county. I was there on the day where the middle school and high school students were there as well as those students who were peer buddies assisting them and they all had a great time and were very, very excited to be there. Earlier today, I was in Charlotte attending an event that our state attorney general, Josh Stein, put together that really highlighted the importance of protecting our next generation of children. It was very, very eye opening with a wide range of topics from the overwhelming need of mental health resources and support in our state to the new level of potent and highly addictive drugs that are readily available to our, our students and kids from suicide prevention, as well as what we can do as municipalities to help with some of these epidemics that we're dealing with. There was also a very common theme throughout that panel discussion and it was centered around the toxicity of the many social media platforms available to our kids today. Many of which I had never heard of and I have three teenagers. So that again, was very eye opening for me. And really in light of a few things that I think have, have surfaced over the last few days on social media. Some I have seen personally, others were shared with me. A couple of things really resonated with me and how as adults and as leaders and really as human beings can impact some of this perpetuating grandstanding and negativity. It's leading by example and, and I'll summarize this with children mimic what they see. So when I see grown adults engaging in poor behavior on social media, personally, personally attacking individuals without actually having face-to-face conversations, facilitating a bullying tone in those messages. It's really no surprise when our kids are doing the same thing. They're, they're, they're following, they're following our lead. I think much of what is wrong in the world these days is folks just have this inability to not have face-to-face conversations anymore. But would rather choose to speculate and chime in and spread false narratives, really for a myriad of reasons that honestly I have no interest in dissecting. But we are better and we have to do better. And that's one of the many reasons that I choose not to engage on these social media posts. And I challenge everyone that if you have questions, please go to the source and ask. If you haven't done that, quite frankly, it's very irresponsible to engage in such banter. I can assure you, it does nothing to help the cause and it can be very, very harmful. Also caution everyone to just pay attention to the timing of things. Things seem to be really quiet in our town when it is not an election year and there's no secret that we have a big election coming up here in Harrisburg in November. And I think if you truly want to be a part of the solution and want to serve this community, then please get out from behind the keyboard, ask questions and show up and engage. I'm not sure what brought everyone here this evening, but I'm sure excited to see all of your faces sitting in the audience. That means a lot to all of us. Chief Dunn, I do appreciate your comments and clarifications earlier in an effort to kind of fact check some of those things that were going on. I won't speak for everyone sitting up here, although I can personally attest that everyone up here is approachable, understands that their purpose understands that their purpose is to serve the community in a professional and respectful manner, and would have no problems having conversations with anybody directly if they choose to do that. So if you're concerned about something that you're hearing or seeing, please reach out. Please reach out to us. I think common sense would prevail and a large percentage of folks would understand that not everything you see on the internet is always true, but sadly, that's not the case. And more often than not, I think folks would rather sensationalize their agendas by any means possible, and sometimes at the expense of others. And for some, the truth doesn't matter. It does for me. And I committed to this community when I ran for office and was elected to treat everybody with respect and dignity and be approachable and available if needed. And very few have actually reached out to have those conversations. I hope the ones that did walked away with a better sense of understanding, but it's a very small percentage. I was actually kind of expecting to have some public comments today, given the amount of social media chatter that we saw this week, this week. And just quit hiding behind that. It, it's not beneficial to our community. It is not beneficial to our kids. And lastly, I really hope this does get shared on our social media platforms. All of our meetings are recorded. I understand that they can be lengthy and not everyone can be here physically or stay on the Zoom call the whole time. But I think here we are about an hour and fifteen minutes in that you can mark. So share it, participate, engage, and I do truly appreciate those that take the time to listen and engage and show up to really participate in our community in a responsible manner. And with that, I will see if there are any council comments this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to just say something very nice that the Lions Club will be having a pancake breakfast on May the twentieth from eight AM to eleven. It's sausage pancakes, coffee, orange juice, and tea. Please, if you can, go by and support them.
I'm sorry, was the date again?
May twentieth on a Saturday, eight, eight to eleven.
May twentieth, eight to eleven Lions Club Breakfast.
So folks, I'm really debating what to say and if to say. But there does come a time. I have sat up here for four years. I have gone through four budgets. My name has been put on social media. I have been accused of several things, and one of them is not being a fan of a certain department in this town. They're saying that we do not support them. This afternoon, I spent three hours. I've gone back to the budget from twenty, I, I got elected in nineteen, started the first budget in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and now for twenty twenty-four. So I have listed here all that we provided and passed for this department. This is not a small budget. This department, out of the general fund, yields thirty-three, thirty-four percent of our general fund budget. That's more than two other major departments put together. There's a disconnect here somewhere. I need to know what that disconnect is. I am offering to sit in this room with any other council member that would like to sit here. And I would like this department to write on a piece of paper, each individual that has a problem, and write on that piece of paper, let's sit here, let's talk about it. I would like for the assistant town manager, the town manager, the town attorney, and the chief of the fire department and the stenographer to come so that I can understand what the disconnect is. And I can sit here and read all these things that have been approved. If I look at this particular budget, this particular budget for FY twenty twenty-four will be seven million dollars. But yet we're told we don't support this department. This department has received during my tenure here, a one point six million ladder truck that they're going to receive in June. They have received a fire training facility at Fire Station Two, which Councilman Russo last month highly said it was very sophisticated, very functional, and it was just wow, so that they wouldn't have to go to Rowan County. Um, we even purchased land for one point five million or something like that, one point two five in the last couple of years for another fire station. I'm at a loss. We even gave all the employees this past year a forty-five hundred dollar bonus because we recognize that they worked hard during the pandemic, that they were on the front lines. We've even moved the nine-one-one system over to another section, whether it was the county or Concord, I forgot, but at their recommendation, and it went very well. But we were not council members that were looking at this. We took the policies and the procedures that were recommended to us by the town staff. Even tonight during the YMCA, staff members, which were part of this team, will receive free memberships to the Y. They will be able to also get an additional membership for fifteen dollars and a max for family at twenty-eight. Wow. We have increased the educational benefits. We've increased the, the health insurance benefits. We have done so much, but yet they say we have not supported them. It, it's time for this disconnect to stop. It's time for you to stop putting down your employer. And here again, I look to the four people that I mentioned earlier. Let's set this up and any other council member that wants to join me in this room, I want to hear, I want them to write on a piece of paper. And I do not want it to be a copied piece of paper that everybody agrees on the same thing, that it needs to be in your home handwriting and from your own heart. Now, I will admit, I have not gone to the fire stations because they have a chore and I'm not like microscoping them. I don't want to get in their way, right? And I was told early on, you don't need to go to those places when I first got elected four years ago. But I want to sit in this room. I want those that are having a problem to come here and let me hear. And here again, all of this, we don't do policy about this. Councilman Smith and I talked about it recently. We don't do policy. The policies come out of the staff and it comes out of the, the directors and the leadership. I do appreciate the fire department. I know you work hard. I know each morning you get up and you don't know what the challenge is going to be put before you that day, as do our sheriff's department. Because it could be very challenging and I appreciate that. And I know someday I will need you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Rodney. Any other council comments this evening?
Rodney, I'll join you there if that meeting happens. As one that's also been labeled as not fire friendly, I will absolutely be there. You know, I've seen it for eight years and I'll just say that you're right, there is a disconnect and we need to fix it and find out how to fix it. Thank you for your words tonight.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okie dokie. We will move on to our first of three public hearings this evening and open this up with Rob, and he will go over our fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget ordinances, tax rates, schedule of fees, and capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. And i-if you don't mind, I'll take a, a, a quick minute. I didn't want to have comments over top of the chief. I didn't want to really crowbar them in anywhere, and I didn't want to step on council or the mayor's comments either. But I, I did want to at least address from the manager's side of things. And, and those of you that know me, staff knows this, council knows this, I don't engage on social media. I do not lead, manage, or govern via Facebook, so I don't have access. But I was asked over the weekend about some of the fire drama that has been dusted up amongst the, the Facebook pages. And I just thought it, it was clear or that it was important to clear up tonight, as the chief did, that under our form of government, we don't take direction on day-to-day policy business from the mayor, from any individual council person or anybody for that matter. Ultimately, this, based on what I know, and I don't know all the context of, of what is out there. But this is a personnel issue. This is a decision that the chief made that I support him on. And that I have not gotten any, nobody has reached out from the staff that this would affect. I have not gotten a call. I have not gotten an email. I've not gotten a text about this, this issue. Certainly, the chief and I, as an internal issue, are more than happy to sit down with any staff member that has a question about any decision that he makes. We're happy to sit down with any council member that has a question about any decisions that we make. And we're more than happy to sit down with any member of the public that has a question about any decisions that we make. Obviously, we're able to share different levels of information with those different levels of people. I do not believe social media is a great place to air those types of grievances. It's probably the least accurate. It, it's certainly the least productive place that I've seen communication happen. So, you know, I'd recommend that if somebody has an issue like that, that, you know, you direct that to the chief, you direct it to the manager and, and we'll deal with it accordingly. But certainly, you know, these, these decisions that we make on a day-to-day basis, some of them are exaggerated, some are not. Some end up on social media, some do not. And, and we just can't, in our daily work, be encumbered by that. So I, I certainly would echo and, and take to heart the, the mayor's words here that you know, our children do mimic the things that we do. And other adults mimic the things that we do. So I try not to engage in the toxicity that is a social media banter. And I, I hold myself to a, to a high standard in the public forum. We hold our staff to a high standard in the public forum. And I would recommend that everybody hold themselves to that high standard. And if you want information, please come to the source and, and we'd be happy to share whatever we can and with whoever we can. So with that, I'll, I'll move on unless you guys have any questions with me before I move on to the public hearing.
Thank you, Rob.
All right. Now we can move on to the good stuff. Manager's recommended budget, fiscal twenty twenty-four. Thanks, everybody, for, for showing up. I know this is the sole reason that everybody's here tonight is to, to see all the hard work that, that we put in. But all kidding aside, this is a, a pinnacle meeting for me and for town staff. The manager's recommended budget is a months-long process that has countless hours of staff time dedicated to it. This year is the longest budget process that we've ever had. Our process this year began all the way back in October. That process, already, already bored some of my staff out of the room. That, that process that began in October starts by engaging our department managers and our staff. Some of the comments that, that were already shared tonight reference that, that, you know, let's say for fire or Sheriff's Department. The very first step in this is to work with our leaders in those departments, develop their anticipated needs for the upcoming budget year, and decide how are we going to get everything done in the upcoming year? We started this year's public portion of this with town council in early December. Again, that's a earliest we've ever engaged in a public manner for our budget process. And this year, it really kicked off at the budget retreat where we were able to discuss town vision, mission, values, and goals. Our town vision and mission have been around for, for many years. You had heard the Speaker Rusty earlier talk about the three hundred and, I think nineteen percent increase that we've seen over the past decade. And in that same time, we've, we've had roughly the same vision, mission, values, and goals here at the town. So the ability to get those finalized at the retreat this year and fleshed out throughout the budget process is a Herculean task that I thank the council and the mayor and my staff for indulging me on. I know that was not an easy task, but we are so much better for having gotten that done. We spent more than twenty-five hours in a open, public budget workshop meetings this year. We use those workshops to gather input and direction from council, from the communities, from staff, and to really be able to talk out in a more informal manner. What are the goals and challenges that we're looking to solve for the upcoming year? The projected revenues that, and expenditures for all the funds in the town this year were accelerated all the way up to early February. In previous years, we sometimes didn't have that information until late April. Sometimes we're, we're adjusting that as it, as it comes in, really. But this year, through the help of the finance department staff, they were able to make those projections internally. We move, we were able to move all of that up to February to provide more time, more transparency to the public and more transparency to the process in general. The manager's recommended budget is intended to reflect the direction and input from our town council, obviously from our staff, and to meet the needs that council and staff hear from the community in the next upcoming year. The budget you have tonight is presented to the council and the public in advance of this public hearing. We had this similar presentation thirty days ago, but really, we've had public process since early December on this, and tonight it will be available for adoption. For those that aren't up on the dais and, and you guys can take a quick break here, because you've heard this several times. But for those members of the, of the public listening at home or those in attendance, one of the big questions that, that a manager gets is what are the budget requirements? Unfortunately, the legislature lays that out pretty clearly for us. So North Carolina general statute, specifically Chapter one fifty-nine, requires municipalities to prepare an annual budget, proposing a plan for raising and spending money for all the specified programs, functions, activities, and whatever, whatever objectives we have for the upcoming fiscal year. Those budgets have to be balanced. The revenues and expenses have to be equal. We cannot run deficit budgets here at the local level. You'll hear us refer to the term fiscal year, which always throws somebody not in government through a loop. The fiscal year refers to a July one to June thirtieth timeframe. So this year's budget, we call fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and that runs from July one, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The budget officer, which in the town of Harrisburg, under a manager form of government, is the town manager. And that person's responsible for the preparation, presentation, and the overall oversight of the budget to ensure the intent of the town council and the community is met. Also for the audience, and, and this is old news for council, but each new council that comes in has, has to go through this process with us. We use a special type of accounting in government where we use fund accounting. And that turns out to be very much like it sounds. We break things into special funds. And that turns out to be very much like it sounds. We break things into special funds. Primary Fund, the one that most people know about, is the General Fund. The General Fund accounts for most property and sales tax revenues. It also includes expenses for things like public safety, police and fire, our streets, our environmental services, like garbage pickup. Street sweeping can sometimes get wrapped into that, but maybe part of our stormwater services, fixing fixing roads, parks, recreation, planning departments, or engineering department, and then the general administration of the town. Other accounts would be called enterprise funds. Those are accounts that are, again, exactly like they sound. These would be like utilities. Those are operated by the town and financed through charges to our customers. We don't use tax revenues for the operation in those departments. Water and sewer are are an example of that, as well as the Stormwater Fund within the town. And then those funds are restricted to be used just for those types of purposes. We also have restricted funds that are similar to enterprise, but are from accounts for monies collected or distributed that can only be spent on a specific project or a program. Capital Reserve Fund is something that we restrict internally. So any savings that we have from the previous year are restricted to be spent on capital projects for all coming years in the future. Powell Bill Fund, which is a grant program that we get direct funding from the state of North Carolina to maintain our roads, that would be restricted just to roads. We couldn't go spend that on police services for some. And then any grant project that we get, ARPO is a good example, but also got several street project grants this year for Caldwell Extension forty-nine. We couldn't then take that money and use it on Roberta Road or anywhere else in the town, even though it's street-related. It is restricted to that particular project. The other type of expenses you'll see within the budget this evening are purchases of long-term assets. These are all logged as capital expenses. Any equipment or building over five thousand dollars are are considered a capital purchase. We use these to track large expenses. It helps the town to plan, prioritize, and prepare for larger future expenses that aren't part of the normal day-to-day operations. The town has implemented a ten-year capital improvement plan to help us in conjunction with the financial models. And that helps us project future revenues and expenses in order for those large capital expenses to not be unfunded. There's many times where we'll see a capital expense that that may be several million dollars. Our annual cash flows wouldn't be able to account for that. So these capital expenses, these ten-year CIPs and the financial models help us to save money and then spend it in a future year. The financial model tool, I'm sorry, skip to skip a little step. That tool helps the town understand those long-stir- long-term outcomes for the budget and expenditures. And that was a progressive change that came before I was manager. This has been here for about five years with the town. It's tran- transformed throughout the budget process. We've made it more specific. We've made it more accurate. And this year's this year's ten-year CIP and the financial models are as accurate and in-depth as as they've ever been. It's something that we can really rely on in order to make those future decisions. These continue to be just a a great guide for current and future financial decisions. Our core budget priorities and objectives for the year. So these are the the major priorities. There's lots of sub-priorities that I'm not going to go through this evening. But we do have our manager's recommended budget on our website available. It has been available since our last meeting. We welcome you to go there. Check it out. If you would like a a physical copy, please come to Town Hall. We can give you a copy of that as well. One of the core priorities is to establish a budget that meets the current and future needs of the town, but also continued utilization of that ten-year CIP and financial models. We have a goal to maintain healthy reserve funds, which are our savings counts for the general fund, the stormwater fund, the water and sewer funds, and to also find those most efficient methods of operating our departments while continuing to maintain those really high level of services that our community has really come to expect. We also search for cost savings throughout this process and methods of revenue generation. That helps us secure the financial future of the town through grant funding, fee generation, and any other way that we can find to generate funds for the town without having to use that property tax value as the main source of funding. We ensure the town's prepared prepared to weather inflation, which has obviously been a hot topic lately. Labor and material shortages have also been issues. And other economic fluctuations are accounted for within our core budget priorities and objectives. And lastly, we strategically plan for long-term success. This includes economic plans, strategic plans, or transportation plans, water modeling, sewer modeling. There's an extraordinary amount of time spent on making sure that we are prepared for the future. The variables that we had to deal with this year, and these are different each and every year. Some of these are great variables. Some of them are are significant challenges. But this year, the the retreat was a a major change in our budget process. This was eight straight hours where I was able to hold the council and the mayor captive. And Lee and I were able to really grind through a a large number of priorities that we needed decisions on and are really proud of the result of that. This is also the fiftieth anniversary for the town. That's an exciting year. Really honored and excited to be able to to lead the town through that year. The amount of events, the the amount of outreach we'll do throughout this year is significant. That requires a major budget commitment, which we've made in this budget. We also have the challenge of the continued steady residential growth. It's a challenge to provide services because of that growth, but it also gives us some opportunities through sales tax increases, property tax increases, and other activity-based revenues. This year, again, I've placed a prioritization and councils placed this priority in me through our our budget process to continue to enhance our public safety forces. Planning and infrastructure also is a high priority and a an investment in the economic prosperity of the town were were the three major components that I was looking to address in this budget. We're also making investment in the quality of service delivery, the quality of life in our residents by investing in retaining and attracting the area's best employees. We're able to do that in in the previous year through our pay study and implementation. And in this budget, through our benefits enhancement. And I'll I'll point out again that that last year, we were able to make the the largest investment in the history of the town and our employees on the on the side of the pay study. And this year, we'll be making the largest investment in benefits in the history of the town in order to continue to appreciate our employees. So I thank the the council in advance of this passage for believing in us or investing in us and providing me with the best employees that North Carolina has to offer. That's just my intro. I see, I see some people took some breaks. Let's hop on the General Fund overview real quick. Pleased to announce that fiscal twenty-four budget has been prepared with no tax increase, maintaining the rate of point four three five cents per hundred dollar evaluation with the town. The service levels are expected to remain the same and consistent. We provide very high-quality services. We're proud of those services. And we're able to continue that very high level with the same tax rate as the previous year. New budget requests this year, significant budget requests, are the addition of personnel. We have eight being requested, and those will be added through four town departments to address all the internal service needs. That'll be in Communications, Fire, the Deputies, and the Park and Recreation Department. A focus on long-term economic and community development are also new requests that we've asked for this year in the form of studies. The expanded town events and fiftieth anniversary, major ask there in having a specific fiftieth anniversary celebration, which we've been out bragging about relentlessly. So I certainly hope this gets funded in this year's budget. Otherwise, I need to say sorry to a lot of people. An increase in Parks Athletics participation programs, both an increase in order to make sure we provide those really high-level services, but also because we provide those really high-level services, we have an increase in participation. A major investment in vehicle and heavy equipment replacements this year, as well as significant operation and capital investments in our streets. What that looks like in detail is that we have those eight new positions. A communication specialist request that will double the size of our communications department and give much-needed support to Communications Director. Three new firefighters, which will add the remaining full-time fire personnel. We need to have maximum fire coverage on each truck. So the minimum for our, say, engine is three. We currently staff at four. This would provide five for each of those shifts. Park and Rec Coordinator, in order to expand the amount of athletic support that we can provide to our programs, we have had two rec coordinators for, I believe, an entire decade. This finally expands that to a third person in that athletics department. And the Harrisburg Division of the Caperes County Sheriff's Department, adding three officers to that force as part of last year's planned expansion for the department. The new employee benefit and retention tools, increasing our four oh one, four oh one K and four fifty-seven B a contribution to three percent. That's up from two percent in previous years. Enhanced tuition reimbursements, a scholarship program, a program for daycare and elderly care assistance, as well as fertility, adoption assistance programs are all things that are highlights of this budget, and we're pleased to be able to roll out. On the capital side, we have nearly two million dollars of capital budget investment just in the General Fund. Half of that being in road and resurfacing projects, investing in our streets and transportation, as well as heavy equipment and vehicles to service those streets. We also have technology, infrastructure projects in the eighty thousand dollar range and nearly quarter million dollars in our park and recs projects, as well as over a hundred thousand dollars in public safety projects. General Fund Financial Model, what I have up here shows twenty-three through twenty-eight. We are now ending fiscal year twenty-three, and I have highlighted twenty-four through twenty-eight, the first five years of our ten-year, ten-year financial model. Any deficit on here would show up in red. As you can see, we not only have a a balanced budget for twenty twenty-four, we have balanced budgets through twenty twenty-eight. Although I'll highlight once again the Capital Reserve Fund, that's the fund that we take savings and put in for each year so that we can spend in future years. We do have some expenses coming out in twenty-six and twenty-seven that draw that down. We will need to build that back up in the out years. Nothing of concern there. But if you see that number going down, that is as intended. All right, less, less texts, less talking, more graphs. General Fund Revenue, what what's that look like? You know, in a in a in a pie chart here, you could see, you know, most people think we're wholly funded by property taxes. And although that is the majority, it's a slight majority. Only sixty percent of the town is funded by property taxes. The remainder is through sales and permits and charges for services that generate the other forty percent of the revenue that we have here for the town. How do we spend that money? That's the, that's always the the biggest question. At the end of the day, is what are we spending that money on? So in our General Fund, you could see here, a third of all money brought in by the town, not just property taxes, but all money is spent on fire services. The next largest is Parks and Recreation Services at twenty percent and deputies coming in at thirteen percent. Environmental protection, which is mostly our trash services, is ten percent. Another eight percent spent maintaining our streets. All the other things that we had mentioned combined in this budget fall into that additional sixteen percent. Our Engineering Department, our Planning Department, our Finance Department, Customer Service, Human Resources, Communications, all of the other general service employees take up less than sixteen percent of the Town General Fund budget.
Rob, could I ask you, if you could go back to that one, just in general, like this kind of pie being so almost flat makes it it's kind of a distorted view, I suppose, because like environmental protection being ten percent, just visually, like it just jumps out at you. But if you kind of tilted back up, then you will see that, you know.
How about I tilt it up on the next one for you here? We could take care of that. That's right. That's always take care of your bosses. Rule number one. So here you can see, you know, more two D view of that, where we have it broken out on the left. Similar as the previous, then you can really, you know, get the the grasp physically of how much we spend on public safety. Forty-six percent of all the money that comes in just just goes to police and fire. That's a little higher than typical in in most communities, but I also think it shows the priority that I have and and the directives that I've been given, that we're going to maintain that that high prioritization on public safety and that everything else in the town stems from having a safe community. So again, priority number one, safety, priority number, priority number two, everything else. When you do break that out on the second chart and see on public safety, how is that divvied up between our our police and fire? And you'll start to see police kind of grow as we grow into that decision that we made last year to add deputies each year. But this is, this thirteen percent is with year two built into it of a four-year plan. So again, fire thirty-three percent, deputies thirteen percent. But of the public safety funding, nearly seventy percent is spent on fire EMS, emergency services, and the rest on police services.
And deputies was eight percent last year.
Good memory. Another way to show it, if you don't like the three D pie chart, or we don't like the two D pie chart, if anybody wants to pull their their dollar bill out and look and see how much of that goes to each department, this is a good graphic for that. And again, you can see lion's share, fire, police, streets, parks. And then you really get into just some slivers of engineering and planning, economic development. But, you know, the really, almost all of town funding goes towards kind of those core services of public safety, parks and recreation, and transportation. Based on this year's tax rate, this is what that tax bill would look like, depending on the value of the homes. So take the number in the middle, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home in Harrisburg would cost one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars at our current tax rate. As part of the benchmarking that that we do in everything throughout town, we try to compare, how are we doing compared to our competitors? How are we doing regionally? How are we doing locally? How are we doing statewide? And it's no different for our our tax and fee comparison. Important thing to notice here, we have four columns on the left, which are our ad valorem, which is our property tax rate. And then we have a couple of the major fees that towns charge. Harrisburg has been committed to in the past and continues committed to having a single rate ad valorem tax rate, no fees associated, so that we have a transparent tax system within the town and that everything is included in that one tax rate. That forty-three and a half cents in in this regard for two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and all of these communities here locally are shown at two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. The Harrisburg house would cost you one thousand eighty-eight dollars. If that same house were picked up out of Harrisburg and placed in downtown Concord, it would cost you one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars, nearly eighty percent more. If that house was picked up from there and moved over to Kannapolis, it would be If that house was picked up from there and moved over to Kannapolis, it would be $1,822. If we moved it over to Mount Pleasant, $1,263. If you moved it outside of, outside of downtown Concord into Concord proper, it would still be $1,270 to have the same house located in Concord. At Harrisburg, again, nearly 20% increase over what our tax rate is. So we, we tend to look at this, our fee and tax schedule to see, are we competitive? Are we fair? Are we trying the best we can to be efficient and spend our tax dollars in a responsible way? So that we're giving the best deal to our residents. And unequivocally, I think it is easy to say the town of Harrisburg provides some of the best level services in the region. And we do it at one of the lowest costs in the region.
Rob, can you go back to that real quick? Cause we get a lot of questions about why are we so much higher than Charlotte? And, and that's not, that number you see there is not a clear picture. Could you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, that's a great question. And when you look at one Charlotte's tax rate, it, it appears to be quite a bit lower than Harrisburg's. But they also charge fees that, that are not associated. So when you add their fees and their rate for the equivalent of home, then it starts to get very close, but they still are a little bit lower. So then you, you ask, okay, what's different in Charlotte compared to Harrisburg? And when you would look at Charlotte, it, it's really apples and oranges. We are 60% of our funds come from our property taxes. It's a very small amount in Charlotte and I don't know what this year's amount is, but the vast majority of their funds come from something other than property taxes. And they're able to do that because of the type of property tax or the type of property that we have in Charlotte. A higher density you have, the higher you go vertical, the more you get per acre on each and every one of those. So as you go horizontal, those take up more space. And you're going to have a higher rate because the value tends to be a little bit lower. So it's a combination of Charlotte over the years has been growing larger and larger and larger with density. Therefore they can have a lower rate. And of that rate, it's insignificant to all the other fees and taxes that they collect on sales and, and things like that. So it really is a, an apples and oranges comparison. But because we are so close, we do like to put them on this list and show that even with all the advantages that they have. We're very much in striking distance of, of their rate as well.
Thank you.
You bet. Now moving on to the water and sewer fund, which is funded quite a bit different. Again, this year, our service delivery is expected to remain constant where we receive very high marks on our water services or sewer services throughout the town. In 2019, the town council at the time adopted a water and sewer rate resolution that it, that identified rate increases every year to support the long-term needs of the water and sewer utilities that we have here for the town. That rate resolution really became necessary to ensure that the revenues that we have coming in are there to cover the annual, sorry, I'm going to need water. That the revenues that we bring in are there to cover the annual cost increases that we get from our suppliers. We purchase water from Concord and then we pay the Water and Sewer Authority of Caparice County to treat the sewer at the plant. Both of those providers send us annual increases. So for instance, this year, WAC's annual increase on sewer charge is 7.9%. And the water increase for Concord with our growth rate and everything included is nearly 5%. So our increase this year is going up the lesser of the two. It'll go up 5% and that is built into that, that rate resolution unless council decides to go back and change that. But between the annual contracts for the increases in water and, and in wastewater and the town's proportional share of a plant expansion that we have to do through the Water and Sewer Authority of Caparice County, which is a $70 million plant expansion. Those annual increases are necessary and we try to keep those modest so that they are able to be tolerated by the consumer each and every year, rather than having a 20% increase every fourth year, like has been typically done here in the past. In addition to the rate increases, the system development charges for developers that build new homes will also go up by that same 5%. The major impacts, and we touched on a little bit, city of Concord, 5% increase. I'm sorry, I didn't update this to the 7.9 that came in between last meeting and this meeting. But WAC's increase will be 7.9% this year. The Rocky River Plant Expansion Debt Service, 355,000 a year. That's an interest only payment that, that we have, and that will go up to approximately 440,000 a year. Each year after, but is also set on what portion Harrisburg is of the region as a whole. And that number goes up annually. So, you know, just last year, we were 9% of the county. This year we're 11% of the county. So we're, we're growing faster than the county is as a whole. This also helps us to cover the inflationary pressures on the supplies, equipment, services and wages. Just like the costs that we have going on individually in each of our homes. The cost of equipment has gone up. The cost of chemicals to treat the water has gone up. The cost of tire repair, oil changes, all the same things that we, we experience individually, the town experiences as well. And we try to build in these steady rates so that nobody gets hit very hard all at once.
Rob, I had a quick question on that last slide. There's probably more for Brian than it would be for you. With interest rates inching back up for savings, is there an opportunity for our water and sewer fund to gain interest at all or not? I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it in the future, like say next year, we're still trickling up. Could that interest offset the increases that we're seeing from, say, WAC from?
It definitely, and, and we've seen that this year with our commercial paper and with everything else that we're, that we were already invested in. Did that incredible returns at about 5% of our funds, which does offset a lot of these increases. And you don't always budget for the maximum amount of interest that we can get. A lot of times we, you know, enjoy that extra interest that wasn't playing anything.
And where that really shows up is in that pie chart of the 60%. It used to be 70% a few years ago, it's come down to 65, now it's, now it's 60. We've seen one, our, our population growth gets us a larger share of sales tax. That, that new tax rate also gets us a larger share of the sales tax. In addition to fees, interest, other things like that are making up a larger portion of that pie. And again, I, I don't want to quote what Charlotte is, but it's, you know, I think their, their tax total tax is again, an insignificant portion of, of theirs, which is where we'd hope to be at some point is where property tax is not the lion's share of the revenue that we have as a town.
And I'll follow up on that, but then on the back end, that interest rate that you have to pay, is that a variable rate that kind of increases every year? Or are you kind of settled in the field of it?
WAC did a bond issuance for this project, so it has to separate.
Yeah, so that. As you say, this one isn't as low as it could possibly get. But it was pretty good timing. So these, this is in like the, the low threes. From a percentage standpoint, it's locked in for 25 years. So you'll get great, we'll, we'll get great response on this rate for at least the five years where we're going to suffer through these high rates. But if they drop down again, you can refinance this, this debt and take advantage of those new rates. So as Brian said, it was great timing and, and, or this number could be quite a bit different.
So here again, Concord passed on 5%, right?
For water. Yes, sir.
Yep. And WAC, you said went up to 7.9.
Yes, sir.
Again, I just want to be sure because when we look at our bill, and I figured it out because we got, I got an email. I don't know if others received the email, but we averaged on our increase this year for a 2,000 gallon only at like 5.2. So we're, we're actually helping them. We're, we're absorbing the cost.
Yes, so we, and we've traditionally, you know, tried to flatten this out there. There are years where Concord's been 4%, WAC's been high and we, we just kind of try to average it out. But, and you know, Mallory hiding behind Brian, but the, the legacy of our public works department has always been that, that we try to do a little better with a little less each and every year. Now certainly that, that doesn't happen infinitely. But at least in the past seven years that I've been here, we've always been able to find efficiencies, combine services, find a better way to build a mousetrap so that we could use some of the efficiency savings that we have, pass that along to the customer and not pass along the entire rate increase that we get from Concord or WAC. The larger you get, the harder that becomes. There's just less opportunities for that to happen. But we do, that, that's an important part of our budget process every year is to, to do that analysis and see, you know, what can we live with? Some of the projects that will be funded in the water and sewer fund this year are water tower one upgrades. As you know, we, we built a second water tower, but we do have an office building out at Tower One that'll be receiving some upgrades, much needed upgrades that haven't been done out there in many years. Utility relocations, about $60,000, that's a legacy project left over from the railway project that came through and us having to relocate our utilities. So I believe this is the last year of that, that $60,000 that, that we'll have going out towards utility relocations. We have obviously technology infrastructure projects, sewer rehab, $250,000. Finally, you know, I see Jamie and Brett being very patient back there. And, and I appreciate their patience as well, but town hall renovation, you know, design, we're going to start this year as we anticipate the YMCA getting their own facility out in Harrisburg Park. And the vehicle and equipment purchases this year of 310,000. So nearly a million dollars investing in the water and sewer fund and capital projects this year. This pie chart, even though it's three dimensional, it's very easy to interpret because 96% of our sales and services. That, that's what, that's what encompasses our revenue for the water and sewer fund. We charge customers, that money then goes to provide the service. Again, very familiar, look at the financial model, same things to look at here. This is balanced not only for 2024, but throughout the, the first five years of the model. We do see decreases, albeit smaller in the capital reserve fund as we fund some of those CIP programs. But if you look at the manager's recommended budget that has our entire tenure model on there, you'll see that number continue to climb as we prepare for additional CIP projects that, that will include additional access to water resources. You know, as Mr. Rozell had mentioned here in the beginning, you know, clean water becoming more and more scarce. That's something we're preparing for well ahead of time. And so we're, we're actually doing a study this year to start to identify where we're going to get those resources from, knowing that we'll have to pay for those in the backend of our tenure model. The stormwater fund is our final utility fund, no rate increase proposed this year for the stormwater fee. The funds will continue to be used to address the problematic areas throughout town. And the, and we also have a capital project this year to replace the street sweeper, which is a requirement of our phase two stormwater permit, which if you had heard me mentioned earlier, the Senate bill may take away our ability to charge that fee, but they would still require us to buy the street sweeper and sweep these streets. So that, that would be quite a conundrum. The, we did allocate funds in the previous year to hire a consultant to create a stormwater rate model to look at those changes, which is why we're not making any changes this year is that that consultant is still working through that. It was significantly delayed due to an inability to get data out of county GIS systems and, and be able to put that in a usable format to give us some actual data in order to make our decisions on whether a tiered system would benefit the town or not. Any tiered system recommendations that we make would still come before council. Those, those wouldn't be an independent decision. That's something that once we get the results of that and have some recommendations, we bring to this board for action in the future. Much more simplistic model here, just because the numbers are lower, but the, the same general concept of a balanced five-year budget. Now just a quick look on the, you know, how are we doing compared to previous years by department overall throughout the town? What did we do last year? What are we doing this year? How is it different? Why is it different? Are we growing quicker than the town is growing? So lots of numbers on, on this sheet, but I'll draw your attention to, to two really, which is if, if we look at the very bottom right-hand number, you see an 8% there. That's the total difference of all funds in the general fund, operating and capital for all departments. So we're proposing an 8% increase across all those departments averaged out, comes to 8%. And the second number I'll point you to is if you go up to, to the deputy and fire section, you'll see 748,000 invested in deputy expansion and 380,000 invested in fire. That's roughly 1.1 of the 1.5 million that makes up that 8%. That's 6% of our total budget increase is invested in public safety. And is mostly invested, again, 4% of that in a previously determined deputy expansion. So the, the, you know, the non-previously committed amount that we're doing out here on here, outside of public safety is 2%. That's well below what we're looking for to get under as far as growth rates and revenue rates. So we're, we're very happy with that. The other amounts there for the deputies came with revenue in last year's budget. So we're able to count on that new revenue offsetting that 750,000 difference that we have there and, and deputy expense. And again, as well as the investment in the three new firemen that we've recommended in this budget. If you look at water and sewer, because we're not adding all of those personnel, we haven't done that kind of expansion proposal for them, this looks a little bit more like what we would expect to see at 3% for the funds overall. Stormwater, because it's such a smaller fund, that can vary widely. You know, 5, 10, 15, sometimes 25% in a given year, depending on the projects that we've identified by the year. And a final comparison of, of all funds budget comparison year over year. Everything that we do in the town, all funds reconciled, the 2024 proposed budget, 83,498,459, which is a very specific dollar, I don't know that we'll spend 459 exactly, but that's what we're projecting. Last year that was 78,389,195 total all funds difference of 5.1 million approximately. And I'll draw your attention at one more number on that, just so we're very clear. Although every year we kind of have some of these big projects that dive in and dive out. And generally they kind of offset each other. This year, if you look under capital projects fund for transportation, that number went from 4 million to 21 million. Obviously we're not spending 21 million all at once on one project. But as an accounting measure, this is something that we account for with our grant funds that come in. We, we show them as expenditures, but we also show them as revenue. So it really balances on both sides of the ledger. The fee schedule for the year will remain mostly consistent with the previous year with a few exceptions. Um, increases to the credit card convenient fees to, to offset those costs to uh, have those transactions, the five percent increases in utilities that we'd already spoke about. Um, increase in the return to item fee as well as some modifications to the engineering, infrastructure inspection fees. Those are going up to cover the cost for inspecting development projects and some modifications to the pop Warner and cheerleading registration fees to make those self-sustaining programs like all of our other programs. So our next steps, the manager's recommended budget has been presented. Um, it's been made available to the public for the past thirty days in the town's website and available for physical inspection here in the building. If a member of the public wishes to, to have a physical copy, they can contact clown, the town, what's called your cl- clown clerk? Town clerk, it's been a long, it's been a long meeting. I apologize Janet. Town clerk Janet um, email here uh, on the screen, phone number there. Uh, but the easiest way is just go on our website. There's a PDF there you can download. You can view it on the website, print your own copy from the comfort of your own home. Um, this is the public hearing uh, tonight with the comments and questions available tonight for obviously council who's already asked some and members of the public. The town council will vote on the budget completion uh, of tonight's meeting. And if uh, that is successful, we will then move into the um, implementation phase and have that budget ready for rollout July one. With that, I will take uh, any questions uh, anybody has and want to give a special um, shout out to uh, the mayor and the council. This has been a long process for the year and you guys are putting in a lot of extra work compared to previous years. Um, as well as Deputy Manager Lee Connor, who um, has been uh, really, 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 really working hard uh, throughout this process. I, I uh, have made lots of changes lots of times and he's always a sport about that as well as Brian Lee and his finance department uh, have always have been there, you know, printing these sometimes Friday night so that we can distribute them Saturday um, to everyone's house. And uh, and really all of our, our staff and department heads, um, we have the best employees in the business. They, they are incredibly talented. They're hardworking. Um, they work late nights, long hours and, and get everything done. Um, you know, perfectly. So, you know, without them, we really wouldn't be able to provide uh, the services that we provide or to be able to present to each of you uh, the budget that I have here this evening. So thank them. Thank you. With that, I'll take the questions.
Uh, one question. Could you go back to the general fund pie chart, please? Very good. Thank you. There, that's good. Um, so I'd ask earlier, I want to make sure that we understand and uh, residents understand. So last year deputies were at eight percent. And this year they're at thirteen because we're doing for a full year, three additional deputies.
Well, and we're counting on it. So we're counting last year's. And.
Okay. Um, if I look at fire, it did not change from last year at thirty-three percent and we're adding three new fire, but we're only doing that part of the quarter of physical year twenty twenty-four, correct?
Yeah, so that would be the last quarter of the year. So it'd be a, it'd be a smaller impact.
Right.
Um, but also because, you know, and this is just math, the um, you know, trickery really is, is that fires already a bigger proportion? So increasing it doesn't move it as much.
Well, true, as we're only doing it for three months.
Yeah, well, and as, as deputies are going from um, seventeen to twenty-eight, you know, we're, we're, we're mov- we're moving fifty percent.
Okay.
Over four years with that.
I just wanted to be sure.
And, and also to be clear, the, the general fund expenses shown here are all funds. Um, that's fees for parks and recreation, which are hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Um, the sales tax revenue, which is millions of dollars a year. So um, it's, you know, sixty percent of this is our property tax. So if you were to say, you know, let's take out um, take deputies, for example, um, it would nearly double. So, so deputies, if, if we looked at that as a percentage of just your property tax, that would, they would be nearly twenty percent of your property tax. If we looked at, at fire, um, and we said, okay, what does fire make up as a percentage of your property tax? There's seven million of the fourteen million that we collect in property tax. So it would be nearly fifty percent of the tax bill that you pay each and every year goes to fire and you're twenty percent of that goes to police services. Um, the other fees of, you know, that we charge for services in the planning department and the Parks and Rec Department that we get in sales tax, that really covers the other things that we do in, in parks and administration.
Thank you.
I got a couple of things, Rob, Rodney, I want to address something you said. Um, we're so far down on firemen, they ain't gonna matter. They're never gonna get what we need. Yeah, three in class now, we'll be ready till November. Those aren't coming till end of next year. There's just so many fire departments transitioning from one to another that it's just probably never see them next year either. Probably have, we had eight openings now, two's leaving next month. That's ten. Yeah, three coming, so that's make seven. It's just a never ending thing. Cause the way they doing a lateral transfers in the fire department all across America. So um, I just want to say one thing about this budget. I'm, I think staff did an excellent job and you all know what I'm getting ready to say. I just can't support it with the parallel plaza, pedestrian facility, walkway, whatever it is, whoever doesn't know what it is, is there's uh, some money in the budget to make parallel one way, one way and Plaza one way, the other way to hook into school. And I just can't support a budget where I live on that road. And I've had a lot of people come to me and um, tell me how they don't want that. So we're going to wait for our public meeting and we're going to address that, but I just can't support a budget in the neighborhood I live in when people are calling me uh, about this and it, and uh, it wouldn't, it wouldn't get pulled out of the budget. So I cannot support the budget tonight.
Can I ask, um, like if we, each of us is like personally affected by something, shouldn't we be recusing ourselves then from voting? I'm just wondering if you actually live on that street and you don't support that.
Well, I'll, I'll answer in the uh, layman logistical term. I'll let our, our legal counsel answer from a, from a legal standpoint. But um, in, in, again, I'll let him speak to specific uh, conflicts, but in general, um, we're all impacted specifically by a town budget in a general term. Um, I think if it gets more specific than projects and hiring and things like that, then it kicks over in, into Rich's um, arena. If you were to have, you know, specific contracts or a family member or something like that um, tied in. But Rich, did, did I, did I do you justice?
Make that. Stay away. That's a very good general uh, description of the way a conflict of interest works. Uh, particularly with reference to something like this, but just because uh, you live on a street in town, there's a project that, that would affect your street, doesn't make it a conflict for you to vote on or not vote on.
Right.
So, so no, it has to be something that, that's more uh, specifically tied to your, to your own financial circumstances and just a, a project on your street would not co- qualify for that.
So, Rob, I'll direct it back to you. I guess I'm confused because I don't remember us having public hearings. I don't remember us going through the motions yet to even discuss with the public about changing parallel. So help me understand how we got to that we're doing it.
I didn't, I didn't say we're doing it. I said there's money in the budget for it.
There was money to do a study to understand, right?
And I can't vote for it because I have people that don't want it. If, if
But it's not.
If council's not willing to pull the money out of the budget, I'll put a motion on the floor, not to do it. I'm, I'll vote for the budget.
Because it was tied to several projects and I explained this to several folks because there was some bad information on Facebook that went through all this and none of this is done. We, we had this discussion. I mean, one of the like it, love it, hate it of council is when we have discussions, we have to have them in public. So when we're talking about ideas, if we try to stifle one idea, then you're stopping every bit of any critical or possible thinking that we could ever do based on the idea of I don't like it, therefore I'm not voting for it. There are many other things in that budget that stand out and, and to say that you don't support it because it might impact parallel.
That's exactly right.
When we haven't even crossed the bridge there, we don't even know what, it, it's too early to be staking claims on a budget.
Then pull it out of the budget, Ron.
There's no reason to pull it out because there's five other pieces.
I got, that's my right. My right as a council member to vote the way I want. And I'm not voting for it because of that. I'll put a motion on the floor to pull it out. Well, second.
Well.
Then it's fine. I'm good with it. What are you worried about my vote for? I'm, I'm not voting.
Because I would, I mean, I'm not voting for it. You weren't here for most of the discussions.
Don't worry about what I was here for or not. I'm just telling you right now, if you take it out, I'll vote for it. It's simple.
Well, there's just money for the study and we actually don't know what the study.
I got too many people calling me and I'm not getting the middle of it. So it's a no. If it goes through, I'm, I'm, my hands are washed with it. I mean.
There's not a second on the floor. So that's a dead motion.
Um, are there any other comments before we go to public comment? Cause we do have to do that portion. We will move into the public comment portion. Again, we did not have anyone that signed up on the sign-up sheets outside, but if there is anybody in council chambers that would like to speak and have questions about the budgets, please raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. Anyone? Okay, is there anyone online? I do see a hand raised, but I do, I think it's been like that for a little bit. Um, Joe, you have your hand raised. So if, if you would like to speak on the budget during public comments, you are welcome to. Just make sure you state your name and address for the record. And you will need to unmute. Okay, I'm not sure if it was in error. It's been like that for a little bit. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak during public comments on the budget? Okay, at this point, public comments are closed. Are there any other comments from council before we make motion? And there are actually two motions.
I'd like to finish my thought with regards to Councilman Russo. The reason I called out your no vote is because I wanted to be very clear that we were nowhere near.
I know, I agree.
But there, there is a lot of bad information over in your area right now that says otherwise. And I worked very hard to try to clear that up. Took several phone calls to clear that up. So I do not want to lead the public to believe that your no vote is saying that we have already agreed upon this, unless it's going to be an action.
My no vote, just um, my constituents, I'm not going to support it because of that. That's all that is.
And you are entitled to your vote. I'm not, I'm more about the idea that this is not even anywhere close to where.
I totally agree.
So with that, um, Rob, I do want to say thank you to the staff. This is the eighth year that I've done this. Um, each year, we've somehow managed to improve the process and I think this year was probably the most seamless that we've experienced. Um, I mean, I can remember days upon days sitting in here in the early stages. I remember sitting here with uh, Janet being the one HR representative plus OSHA person plus you name it. Um, you know, Tahisha, we, we challenged you this year to bring it with benefits. And I just say thank you very much for that. It meant a lot. I mean, we know we can't continue to chase the dollar. We've got to have reasons for what these folks to stay in, employed here with the town. I think we provide a great opportunity. I think the benefits are amazing. I mean, uh, I, I keep saying when I grow up, I want to get a government job because it's much better than my benefit right now. At the same time.
We're always hiring.
Yeah. At the same time, uh, all the department heads have been more than willing to accommodate us and work with us when we have our crazy questions. So thank you and thanks again for a great budget.
I think it was seamless on this side because of everything you guys did.
I would just like to say I will be supporting the budget, even though the word is that I'm against a department. I will be supporting the budget. So I hope that goes a long way to the public and to the staff and that particular department.
There are two motions that we have to make um, this evening. The first motion is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget ordinance, schedule of fees and capital improvement plan as presented. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion is stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion is carried. The second motion is to set the tax rate for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four at point four, three, five, four hundred dollars evaluation and to be collected by the Cabarrus County Tax Office. To be clear, that is not changing from last year. Um, is there a motion on the floor to set the tax rate?
Motion is stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion is carried. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate uh, you guys bearing with us through, through the process. And we look forward to implementing this throughout the uh, next fiscal year.
Our next, where am I? Our next public.
Zach.
I know Zach is up to speak with us. Yes, our next.
Want to take a halftime? Halftime editing.
It is to consider the non-contiguous annexation and rezoning of five point five nine acre parcel lot, um, Robinson Church Road um, from countryside residential to residential low density.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd just like to make one, one quick request. Is the applicant here? This evening?
For Robinson Church? I do not think so.
But in, in view of that fact, I'd like to uh, request that this be pulled from the agenda.
Okay.
Do we get a motion to continue it or do you want to remove?
Uh, continuation be fine because then we don't have to re. Yeah, so um, the, the issue um, that has arisen is uh, relating to a portion of this parcel, which is located in the state right of way. Um, the concern is that if we approve this annexation, we're going to have property in the town that is under the state right of way, when that ought to be dedicated to the state eliminating that from any uh, potential conflict. And so we were prepared this evening to bring that to the attention of the property owner. Uh, but on the advice of uh, our attorney, since they're not here, we really don't want to proceed with that without their consent. And so we're going to bring that to the next uh, but continuation would, would, w- we could, we wouldn't have to re-advertise. We could.
Thirty day, sixty day?
Thirty day. Next meeting.
And we would still have public hearing at that point. So is there a motion on the floor to continue item two?
Motion is stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Get to stand right up there. Again, we have one more um, public hearing this evening. It's to consider a request for contiguous annexation or rezoning of property on Wedding Bell Court.
Good evening again. Um, this is also a request for rezoning uh, accompanied by annexation or annexation accompanied by rezoning, however you want to look at it. Um, this property uh, is located on Wedding Bell Court, which is off of Robinson Church Road. Uh, consists of two parcels, about two point one, three acres. Uh, again, the uh, request is for town utility service. That's the motivation. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board has recommended approval of this rezoning. Uh, planning staff is recommending that you hold a public hearing on the proposed rezoning and annexation of the property. Um, in terms of decision, council policy is for a two-step process, two decision, uh, two-meeting decision process. Uh, public hearing would be held tonight uh, for the rezoning and annexation with a final decision at the June twelfth meeting. However, council adopted policy does allow for a one-meeting decision uh, with unanimous consent. Uh, and so if that's your pleasure, uh, I'm certainly not opposed to. Uh, and so if that's your pleasure, uh, I'm certainly not opposed to that. Uh, so we'll go through it. Um, and if you'd, uh, if you'd like to roll that into one meeting, you certainly free to do so. Um, here's the property, uh, again, orient everyone, um, that, uh, is Rocky River Road uh, to the lower part of the screen, uh, you can see the two parcels outlined in red. Uh, Wedding Bell Court goes to the bottom of those parcels. Uh, there's an existing pro- or an existing home at the end of that road, uh, that you can see on your screen. And then a vacant parcel in the front that's not owned by the, uh, by the applicant. Um, here's this, a survey that shows you both parcels, uh, two and three, um, and, uh, with all the appropriate information. In terms of, um, the land use plan, um, this property is designated within an MDR, medium density residential uh, future land use area, which calls for single family, uh, two to three units per acre. RM zoning, which is the requested zoning, allows for two to three units per acre. Um, the density here would be a little bit less than one unit per acre. Um, where we have 2.13 and two lots. Um, that said, the, uh, proposed, uh, request for rezoning for RM is consistent with the land use plan. Um, and also with the allowable density for MDR. In terms of adequate facilities, uh, sewer is available. Um, the individual single-family homes again are not subject or exempt from the sewer allocation process. Uh, water is available on Robinson Church Road, uh, sanitation service and safety and sanitation service would be provided upon annexation, uh, transportation improvements were not a concern. And so the TIA was required and the number of children to be generated by two single-family residential units uh, is not considered to be significant, nor, uh, will it affect the school capacity. And so the, um, action requested is to hold a public hearing on the rezoning as well as the annexation uh, for a Wedding Bell Court, uh, to rezone from LDR to RM town zoning. Um, staff recommendation is to conduct the public hearing on rezoning and annexation uh, and consider decision at the June 12th council meeting. Uh, there is an option if you'd like to approve it, uh, in this meeting and, uh, certainly would be, uh, would be open, uh, to that. Uh, with that, I will open for questions or go back if there's anything that was not clear.
Zach, will you go back to the future? I want to understand all the property. I have a, I have a question.
For the future, future.
You go back, back to the general, like again.
Where you haven't read.
Yeah.
The property outlined.
I'm sorry. Right.
There you go. So there's one, two, three, four, there's five properties. Are they all related in some way somehow?
No.
All right. So you know, one day all of a sudden, I just rode by there, number, number months ago, and there was this big house there and there's this, this street. And I was like, wow, where'd that come from? Right? So I want to understand, um, first of all, about the road. And the road was constructed as a driveway or the road was cons- constructed as a county road?
It it's a private road. Which means it is maintained privately and and Rob can probably clarify a little bit better since he was probably here and that road was created, but, uh, it is not a town road. It's privately maintained. And it would continue to be a private road, even with that.
And constructed under county standards. Nope.
No, constructed under.
Any standard.
Whatever standard you want, because it's, it's a private access easement that would be maintained by, um, the property owner that that easement's on. And so the plat map for this actually, um, identifies the the road says this will never be accepted by DOT as a road. It's for private purpose only. So.
Okay, so these two properties will be using that road. Or will not be using that road. So how do you get, how does the second lot? I mean, I guess I go back to a question is how many homes truly can be built on this property?
Um, so each lot could contain one home.
Okay, so if there's a home put on the back lot, how do you get there?
They would have to have an easement recorded with that property that gives them access to that property. And that's something that, um, when we're reviewing, uh, the plat, we can ensure that that's on there. Maybe they're already, but that's something that we would review and and Rich might speak to it. But I I think, uh, we we can't issue, uh, a building permit or we can't clear a building permit unless there's access to that property. And so access can be taken off a private road and we would ensure that there would be an easement to that property for that particular, uh, home.
So so my bad answer is it depends. Um, but the better answer is really that at, the the plat doesn't change. Like the 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 creation of those parcels are the same. It's just whether they're going to come into our jurisdiction or not. So currently, both of those parcels have, uh, an easement access out to the road. They could use that, but it just really depends what they're going to do there. I mean, if if somebody's going to own both, they could access it from anywhere. If you were going to build two houses and they're not going to be related, they're not going to have anything. Well, then in the transfer of that, on the deed, it would say, hey, you you have an access easement here. Um, it does remain silent on the plat on, uh, who would pay for any upgrades. You know, you get the, the driveway gets in a bad shape. Who's responsible for, uh, putting the new gravel down or doing whatever? Um, you know, you you can get into individual disputes in that regard, but it really just depends.
I mean, we will not get into a situation like we did with Lucas Court. So forty years, fifty years down the road, when this property is sold and it's sold to someone else. And now they come before council, is it going to, they're saying, well, this road is in the town, but it is or isn't. Just need to see where we're going with that to make sure, because I I mean, you know, the documents, you're saying the documents will state that it is not a town maintained road.
Right. A- and at some point in the future, if somebody, the owners or any other owners that want to have that road accepted as a town road, they would have to build it to town standards and then come to.
They'd also have to come for a zoning clearance permit. When you go to build a house on that, you'd make sure that they have access to the property. Like, there's lots of other things that that can come up. I mean, if if you provide utilities, right? They could come up in and ask for a subdivision of these lots at a later date. Um, if technologies change where they get, so there's just lots of things that are unknown as as we know it. You could do two houses. They would share that driveway and they would have, uh, an access easement, um, jointly on both deeds.
And here again, that driveway's not Wedding Bell Court.
I don't know what it's called.
Yeah, Wedding Bell, right, Wedding Bell Court is the, uh.
That would be the access to the second lot.
Yes.
Because today it does have a gate there.
Right, that second lot access would only be on Wedding Bell Court unless, as Rob said, there was a joint driveway, you could theoretically bring it through to access. I mean, the first lot could access on to Robinson Church.
Right now it's one owner. If they decide to, to sell one, it's going to, depends what they want to use it.
Well, yeah, and we don't know, right? We're just making sure.
If they sell it to, let's say, the other adjacent house, they wouldn't need that access. They have their own access. Um, it, you know, if they sell it to, uh, another parcel, it just really depends on, on what the actual use would be. If it's an individual house, most likely they're going to have that access easement on Wedding Bell rather than finding a different access easement in order to make it usable.
All right, thank you.
So we're going to have public hearing?
But we, do we have to announce? We're doing a thirty or sixty, where where is that part?
No, you you, well, make sure, because this is new. I I think I understand, um, but we don't have to announce the, uh, timeframe, do we? Yes, yeah, whether, whether we decide on it tonight, um, at the end of the public hearing or whether or not we wait thirty days and make the decision at the second meeting can be decided at the end of the public hearing. Not in a, in advance of. So, 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 yeah, you can, you can hear comments, which is, I was going to answer that. I'm glad, you know, Avery affirmed. But I I think we've always talked about, we'd be able to hear comments, make a determination based on those comments and who showed up of whether or not this needs more time or not.
So the first public hearing will be for the annexation, I mean, for the rezoning request.
Yes.
We're going to open up publicly. Public hearing is open for the rezoning. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak? There was not anyone that signed up, but I would like to offer that up. You'll come up and just state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Hicks, I'm at eighty-nine eighty Rocky River Road. I'm in the adjacent to Wedding Bell backs up to our property line. But I'm just concerned because it says on here, the PIN number is five, five, zero, six, 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 nine, two, six, zero. But on the agenda, um, it's a different PIN. So is this the same properties?
Good question.
We'll get you an answer for that momentarily.
Thank you. Is it on that flat diagram? If you'll just state your name and address for the record.
Gloria Moore, uh, I live.
Can you, can you use the mic? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, uh, Gloria Moore. I own the property at eighty-nine eighty Rocky River Road. Um, that was my sister. And we had a question about, we got a notice that because we were within three hundred feet of where they're going to be doing that. How does that impact our property or any of the other surrounding properties?
So the, yeah, and and, uh, and I may kick if I'm, if I'm wrong here. So I can let Rich and, uh, Zach chime in, but the, the three hundred foot is, is, um, a, a distance that we choose for notification to the public. More of a statutory thing. It may or may not impact you, but we have to choose a distance to notify people, um, physically. So three hundred feet is, is a close proximity number. Um, so it depends, right? So if this was a junkyard, you might be very interested, uh, to hear that. Um, it happens to be single family, um, and that may or may not, uh, affect you at all. But because of that close proximity, we send that out to everybody within that distance.
So if they get annexed, I don't have to get annexed.
No.
Thank you. Zach, did you want to address the PIN number discrepancy?
We're always taking applications, though, if you want to be part of the town, we're, let me know.
Right, so the, um, the correct PIN number, um, James, can you please go back to the opening slide? Thank you. That's for C, yeah. So the, you hold this slide for a minute. That, that PIN number, uh, is in error. Uh, the five, five, oh, six, six, six on that particular side, nine, six, nine, two, six, oh, is that six? It should be five, five, zero, six, six, nine, two, six, zero, zero. Uh, the other is correct. Um, and, um, if we go back to the first slide, uh, the four C one, that should be also the same. Uh, just the first sliding, uh, the opening, four C. I can, I'm good. Let me drive the. Okay, so that is, that is the correct number. That, that one slide had the incorrect number.
Does that answer your question?
No, two, six, six, zero is the actual number, say.
Right, that's the correct number.
Thank you, Zach. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak during public comments for the rezoning? I'll move. Is there anyone online? Just raise your hand and we will call on.
Gentlemen, didn't he want to speak? Did you want to speak? No?
You raised your hand.
Yeah, just state your name and address for the record.
Uh, William Weathers, uh, I I'm the owner of the, uh, property over at, uh, that's in question. And and I was trying to understand why, why the access to the the, uh, second property would be a, a problem when both properties is owned by the same person. So it shouldn't be a problem to get in and out there. You can make another driveway. If, if, if necessary.
I think the question was the access point to the driveway.
The access point in ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road, we don't know who is owning the property. And we just want to be sure that if that you decide to sell half the property, that that part of the property is taken care of. To be able to get to it. But right now, right, just looking into the future, sir.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, it's, it's, it's owned by, uh, my grandfather wanted to ha- it's a hand-me-down property, so.
You plan not to get rid of.
I'm not supposed to get rid of, but like you say, you can't never tell. What's going on. But, uh, I I was hoping that we could, uh, really, uh, work this out and we can get that property in there. Cause, uh, it was, it was, uh, hand-me-down to me and I gave it to my son and my daughter. But then the music, tried to keep it in the family, like a, so you. Okay, thank you.
Very nice. I do not see any, um, hands raised via Zoom. Public comment is closed for the annexation portion. Is there a motion on the floor? Are we, do we need to decide at this point if we're doing the thirty days or? Okay. Tonight.
James, could you go to the second to last slide? We've got motions for both rezoning and annexation in anticipation that you might elect this option.
Excellent.
So, um, yeah, just go to the, uh, the last two. Keep going. Okay, uh, one, go back one, I'm sorry. I can, I can do that, right? Rezoning, here we go. James is so good at.
So is there a motion on the floor to approve, approve the request for rezoning of the property located Wedding Bell Court? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. We do have a consistency statement based on the staff report, staff presentation and testimony of the applicant. The request for rezoning is consistent with the Harrisburg area land use plan and is reasonable and in the public interest. Is there a motion to adopt the consistency statement? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Is there a motion to approve the annexation request for the properly located at Wedding Bell Court? Motion? Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that will conclude our public hearings for the evening. Moving right along into old business. Mr. Connor is up with our consideration of adoption of new town vision, mission values and goals.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I first want to apologize because this will be virtually identical to what you saw last month. Uh, but it should give you a good context as we move in, um, to where we are tonight, which is making a decision on it whether or not to adopt, um, a new town mission, vision, um, and core, core values and goals. So as, uh, again, brief background on where we were, uh, how we got here. I mean, in this past December, uh, town council held a retreat to discuss the vision, mission, values and goals. This was a full day retreat off-site and we spent a lot of time, everyone in this room with Rob and myself and worked really hard throughout that entire day. Going through a bunch of different scenarios, we had Centralina actually take us through that process. And what we wound up at the end of that day was a draft of a new mission, vision, values and goals. So we had an opportunity to spend a, a couple of months digesting those and see if we want to make any changes. So in the February twenty-twenty-three meeting, staff provided updates and council further refined those draft statements. Then last month, again, staff presented the final drafts to council. And so tonight, those final drafts from last month have gone unchanged. We have been able to get a new graphic, which I'll show you at the very end of the presentation, out to the public. So that's available for anybody to see. And just as a preface, wanted to mention that our existing current mission statement was drafted in July of two thousand eight. So as you heard earlier with Rusty about the growth of Harrisburg, we know the history of pre-two thousand ten, we were in the five thousand range and now we're in over twenty-two thousand. So that kind of was one of the seeds that we needed to say, okay, we need to go in and look at this, all of these items again and really see does, how do we want to move the, the town forward? So the vision that council has come up with is Harrisburg will be a distinctive, family-focused community where memories are made. The mission which supports that vision is together, we enhance our quality of life by collaborating, planning and investing to create our community of choice. Then our core values. So again, you can almost imagine a pyramid where we start out with the vision and it works down to the mission. And then again, our core values support both of those. Those core values are honesty and trust, commitment, compassion, community and relationships, collaboration and accountability. And the foundation of all of that above is our goals. And these are the items that we ideally look at anything that we do and apply these goals to those decisions. And again, that goes to support that entire pyramid. So the first goal is the town of Harrisburg maintains a strong financial position. The town of Harrisburg promotes and supports a dynamic and responsible, a responsive local economy. The town of Harrisburg provides safe, well-maintained, independent public facilities, systems and services. The town of Harrisburg communicates its goals, successes and challenges to the community and serves as an advocate for the community. And finally, the town of Harrisburg will actively and responsibly plan for our future with compassion and respect for our heritage. And so here you can see the updated graphic that we put together. So you can see the mission and vision at the top of the page, the goals there in the middle. And then finally, at the bottom, values. And specifically, we highlighted community throughout because one of the themes throughout is just our identity as a, a community that we want to really have a, a family-oriented community that focuses on what brought us here and take that to where we want to go in the future. So that is where we are at. Be happy to answer any questions and the action for council tonight will be whether or not you would like to actually adopt this vision, mission, goals and values.
Do you may reach out, me or the residents reach out since last month, making a comment?
No, sir.
Are there any other questions? This has been a long time coming for Harrisburg. I love that they are measurable. It's definitely a guiding practice when we have projects come before us that we can go through these step-by-step and evaluate, does it meet all of these criteria? And again, this wasn't something that we all just set up here and said, hey, let's do this. We actually worked with Centralina Regional Council. They were kind of the guiding force behind this, gave us some tasks to put together and, and I think we did a great job with that. I really like how this is presented. And thank you, April, for putting it in this beautiful graphic.
Yes, and, and.
I like Lee's too, but I like Lee's.
As you look at it, you highlighted the word in yellow, community. So we need to remember that as we go forward and we look at developments. So community under the vision, community under the mission, community twice under the goals and community once under the values.
Fair enough. Thank you. Is there a second on the floor? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks so much, Lee. Oh, you're staying up.
Yeah, can't get rid of me just yet.
Yes. Next up is the consideration of adoption of the updated bylaws and appropriate dissolution of town advisory boards and committees.
Thank you again. Again, virtually everything that we will go through on this is what you saw last month. The big difference, there's a couple of added items as we actually got in, developed what those bylaws look like, sent those out for council to see, got some feedback on those. So we did incorporate some of that here. By and large, what we have is a pretty consistent view of all of the different advisory boards. So just to kind of get into the background before we get into the details too much. So a few months ago, council had directed staff and this started that same retreat that we did with the, that we talked about before, where we knew that we needed to look at all of our advisory boards and committees. Over time, there have been committees and, and boards that have come and gone. And some of them have stayed on the books and they're just not even active anymore. And this is an opportunity to go in, evaluate everything and really get down to what council sees as the most important advisor boards and committees that you see the most value in. So council directed staff to evaluate all of our boards and committees. Determine the need, the current need and the viability of those boards. Identify or look and compare the terms and term limits as well as the number of members. The direction was to create a consistent template for each board and committee of both its makeup and its administrative policies. So the initial results were provided to you in January. And council then further directed staff to provide recommendations of viability and consistency. So we took that as we have been working with council and among staff on this for a few months now. And we presented what those updated results and recommendations were in last month's meeting. So the primary boards that we looked at were the Planning and Zoning Board. Did want to mention a little different from last month, where we were talking about the Planning and Zoning Board and the Board of Adjustment. As we were digging into these bylaws and particularly for the Planning and Zoning Board Rules of Procedure. Town attorney advised us as we knew already, but specifically that the Board of Adjustment is specifically regulated by state statute. So there's certain pieces like the size of the board, the number of years in the term are actually in the state statute. So those are going to be a little different for that one in particular board than any of the others. So we wanted a little more time to make sure we got all that accurate because it will be different. One of the things that we'll be bringing back to you next month is actually, while it is now, it, the, the Board of Adjustment is kind of like a subset of the Planning and Zoning Boards. It's the same members, just or at least five of the members, they're using a different capacity. What we'll be bringing back to you next month will be a separate board with potentially a different makeup. So again, we want to make sure we get all that correct with our town attorney and, and get that together, but we'll have that together for council at the June meeting. So tonight, when we talk about planning on zoning board, it's just a planning and zoning board. It's not the Board of Adjustment. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Fire Advisory Board, the Sustainability Advisory Board and the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. Those are all the ones that we specifically looked at. Again, there are a lot of other boards that have just, that used to be part of the town that were created at certain times for certain reasons. And those, the goals of those boards are passed, but they've never been eliminated. So this will, those weren't specifically looked at since those will fall off as we'll discuss in a little bit. So the comparisons, again, same information that you saw last month. The big thing that you can see out of this chart is that every board was in large part doing something a little different. So our goal again for what we're trying to do tonight is to get all of these boards consistent. You can see the number of members are up and down anywhere from five to nine members. ETJ requirements are a little different. The ex officio members were really all over the place. And again, it just kind of goes on. We looked at length of terms, term limits, the term end date, meeting attendance requirements and what constitutes quorum. So what we recommended last month, and there's only one change to this, this month, is what you see here. So we're recommending seven members, which mirrors our existing board. So every boarding committee would have the same seven member makeup. ETJ requirements, there's no requirements, but no more than one from the planning area. So that gives us an opportunity, if council so chooses. One of the seven members can be outside of town limits. It's not required. The one caveat is with the Planning and Zoning Board, that does have a county member appointment that's supposed to be within ETJ. State statutes actually only requires us, after we notify the county ninety days to actually appoint a member for us. After that time, we have the ability to name someone to that board. In-town limits are up to anywhere, but we're saying up to the planning area. So again, it would, after those ninety days go by, if we haven't got a county appointment, it falls back to the same requirements as all the other boards. The ex officio, so this is one of the new things and we'll kind of get to that a little more in-depth when we get to the viability of the different boards. But particularly, we felt like it was important to have one sustainability-focused person on each of these advisor boards and committees. In a, in this case, an ex officio non-voting capacity. But that doesn't hinder anybody with a sustainability focus from actually applying to membership of the full board with actual voting abilities. Length of terms, look at streamlining that to two years across all boards. The term limits, we would have two terms, so a total of four years. They would have to be all for two years, again, for our two terms, four years, and then it resets. So up to four years on, four years off, four years on and so forth. The term end date, this was a discussion that we had last month on whether we do June thirtieth or September thirtieth. Majority council seemed to be more in favor of the June thirtieth, so we went ahead and locked that in. That way, it just stays in conjunction with the town's fiscal year. It's easy to remember. This year, it'll be a little funky because we're so close to that June thirtieth period now, where it'll bleed in a little bit after June thirtieth. But after we get through this year, we'll be set. And as I'll show you in a minute, we actually have a process that'll be added into the bylaws that speak to the procedure of how you go about appointing a new member. And meeting attendance requirements, that's seventy-five percent. And quorum is a minimum of four of the seven. Again, I will have another slide specifically talking about quorum, so stay tuned for that. So the application process that I just mentioned. So this is new, the, none of the current bylaws actually go into this level of detail. But we felt it was important to present you with like an assistant way. We've always had issues with inevitably having to come back to council and ask to extend terms and, and that stuff. This way, it sets everything up so that by June, the June council meeting of every year, council will be considering, at the latest, they'll be considering any of the appointments for any of the boards and committees. So first, what we would do is we back everything up ninety days. So June thirtieth is the, the end of, of the vacancy. So we would go back three months from there. The applications will be accepted for thirty days from the initial posting. Committee can be put together that will comprise of at least one council liaison and a staff liaison. That is different from how most of the committees or boards do now. All of the boards currently self-recommend, they, they actually go through this interview process and recommend to council their selection. This is a, a pretty big change from that where that doesn't happen any longer. That town council now has the lead with town staff to go through those applications. There's not interviews that are required, but if council so chooses, interviews will be held within thirty days of the end of the application acceptance. So if we back things up three months and we start on April one in that scenario, the end of April, you'd have thirty days to have the interviews. So at that point, the committee can present recommendations to town council no later than a June council meeting each year. In the case where interviews may not necessarily be needed, then as early as May, these could be brought before council. Any questions about that? That's a, a big shift in the application process. We'll move on. So voting, and this relates to the quorum issue, again, a bit of a change. And really, most of what it is, is clarification as well as actually putting in to the bylaws what we've put in different pieces, like we put out whenever the statutes changed after we had the COVID declaration and we went, we got the, the, going back to the old way where you have to actually be present to cast a vote, to be part of a quorum, to actually have the meeting. So we took that and we put all that in writing, so there wouldn't be any question on these anymore. So basically, to have a quorum, which is to hold a meeting or conduct business, you have to have a minimum of four of the seven members that have to be actually physically present. This four, if for some reason, lock that down. If we wind up, in a case where we have multiple vacancies that get us down to that four and somebody's missing, you, you can't conduct business. You have to have those four regardless. So obviously, it's going to be a greater importance for all of our staff liaisons to work with the advisory boards to identify vacancies and as quickly as they come up, if they're outside of the normal time, work to get those filled, so we don't have anywhere close to that issue. In the case where there's not a quorum, so three or less, then the meeting. In the case where there's not a quorum, so three or less, then the meeting must be adjourned. So you can't have a meeting if you don't have at least four. Those may be cast from those physically at the meeting, and the simple majority wins. And again, the, the term to focus on there is physically. You have to be physically there. You can certainly attend via Zoom, just like any council member can. But just like any council member that attends virtually, they cannot place a, a vote that's validly taken. So again, goes back to really trying to clarify the physical presence in these meetings. If a member happens to leave during the meeting, they cannot vote. And if that causes the total physical people in the room below the quorum limit, only business can, that can be taken is adjourning the meeting. So if you have four people, one person has to leave for some reason, then the only action that can be taken at that point is to adjourn the meeting. Again, it goes back to you have to have four people of the seven to conduct business. The last item is relating to conflicts of interest. So interestingly, we had that question kind of come up tonight, just from a council standpoint. But in the case where you actually do have a legitimate conflict of interest, then the member must excuse themselves from the meeting. In this case, if this causes the number of people present to be less than four members, we're still saying it's considered a quorum if you had the four at the beginning of the meeting. The catch, though, is that if you don't have at least four, they can't vote. Typically, we wrote this in there, in the case of you have five things on the agenda, and item two comes up, and item two, it has, someone has a conflict. It wouldn't make a lot of sense to adjourn the meeting and move on if that person causes it to go below four. So that, we specifically wrote that in there in the event that it's just more of, I'm, I'm excusing myself from the meeting, I'm going to be back after that discussions happen. There can't be action taken on the discussion, but discussion can still be had, and it will have to be at some point in the future date, whenever a full four or more were available to actually take a vote. So I know that's a lot on voting. Yes?
Yeah, can you make that language more clear? Like if a member had to excuse themselves from the meeting for a period or during that subject matter? Because I was wondering what the difference was between the two.
It reads a little better, actually, in the bylaws. I'm paraphrasing some of that and putting it up here on the screen. But we'll make sure that the bylaws read clearly that, because it is a little confusing. Any other questions I can answer on that? So that's it as far as the consistency across all of the different boards. So what you've been presented with the additions of specifically the, these voting items, those successfully have all of the boards having consistent bylaws of these items particularly. We didn't go in and actually have a template that was copy and paste for each of the different boards, because they all have certain nuances and certain reasons why the board's been created. And so we were trying not to totally rewrite the entire set of bylaws. So we just really went in and modified those that get the consistency in place. So some things are in different places, but if you look at all of what we have presented here tonight, it's the same across all the boards. So our next step is viability. So a lot of these have been analyzed informally over time. We've had a lot of discussions with council and management and staff. After all of that, and taking another closer look and, and hearing from council, especially in our workshop in December of really what council was looking at going forward, we came up with this split. So what we're recommending is the planning and zoning board, along with the Board of Adjustment, but again, we'll have that presented separately next month. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. All of those, we felt were still viable and are continuing to provide that benefit to town council that y'all were looking for. The two items that we have are the two boards that we're recommending as not being viable. There's a fire advisory board, and we discussed last month the reason why that particular board was there. Primarily, the responsibilities have shifted. Whenever they came in under the town back in two thousand and six, that fire advisor board was a fundamental bridge between the fire department and the old town administrator form of government. And since that time, over the last, you know, six or seven years ago, when we switched over to the mayor council form of government, that, the utilization of that board for the purpose that it was created in two thousand and six was not the same. And so that's had an issue in that decision, as well as the term limits we discussed last month. Again, that with the new term limits that we have in there, six of the seven spots would be turned over. And because of that, it will be very difficult to get that up and running again. Not that that is a primary reason for why that's being recommended as not viable. It's primarily the responsibilities that have adjusted over the last fifteen years or so. And Sustainability Advisory Board, I mentioned that a little bit earlier. And this is recommended not being viable due to the reorganization that we're recommending. So I think everybody in town and council staff, we all see there being value in sustainability. The challenge is, the Sustainability Advisory Board started out as a committee, moved up to an advisory board. And there's always been a concern of really the direction, both of their members and of staff and council. And so we felt like it was a better use of their skills to reorganize them into being these ex officio members at a minimum. Again, nothing says that anybody from the Sustainability Advisory Board could not run or go in and apply for a full membership of one of the other boards. But by at least creating that sustainability piece of each one of the advisory boards, they now have a voice directly with the advisory boards. We know that Parks and Recreation is heavy in their use of sustainability. A lot of the stuff like Arbor Day with the trees, and also the recycling efforts that we have in our parks. Those things are, would benefit greatly from having that person right there in the advisory board, as well as the Hatch Committee. And then the planning board, of course, we're already talking about some of the revisions to the U D O that we want to see. Those revisions are going to be going directly through the planning advise, or the planning is only board. So again, that creates them a space where they have to directly be able to help advise those advisory boards. So that was the reasons why. Rob, did you want to add to any of that?
I think we covered it pretty clear in the previous meeting as far as the ones that weren't viable and how we're going to reorganize and/or eliminate. In the, in the interim between that meeting, in this meeting, we've only really had one person reach out to give us any comments or, or feedback about that. And, you know, I was gonna make clear, I guess it, at this meeting after we had made these decisions, because I didn't want to be presumptive to the decisions that council would make this evening. But after decisions were made, our intent would be to reach out to the people that have volunteered for these boards, thank them for their service. Those that have an opportunity to serve on something else, give them the opportunity to know about those in advance and to do something special for the long, the long-serving members. Especially, I think, when you look at Fire Advisory Board, where I believe we have a member that served for over twenty years in that capacity. It wasn't our intention to leave those folks high and dry and, and not reach out. But I do think that, based on some email responses that we got, that that was a fear that was out there. So I just wanted to point that out, that once council makes decisions, we, we do intend to reach out to these folks.
For reference, youth council is not listed here because we agreed to push it out. Is that correct?
Well, it, it's not a, it's not a board. It's not an advisory board or, or something like that. Our recommendation there is to more formalize it as a program. And our programs go through parks and racks. We would have some guidelines associated with that under the, the programming, but nothing to decide as far as bylaw changes, things like that this evening.
And also, the Board of Adjustment, there is no sustainability position, right? On Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
Okay.
So just to finish it out, a point now where, again, we can answer any other questions council may have. If council chooses to accept the recommendations we put before you tonight, the motion would be to adopt the revised bylaws for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Harrisburg Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, and revised Planning and Zoning Board rule, rules of procedure. And then a second motion to formally dissolve all boards and committees other than the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Harrisburg Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, Planning and Zoning Board, and Board of Adjustment. Again, that is just a catchall so that any boards that may have been started and finished and are still out there somewhere, this just cleans all of that up at one time.
So that language is enough to dissolve anything that we may or may not know about.
Those are the approved first one there.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt the revised bylaws.
Got some questions before we do that.
Okay.
I want to make sure, well, I want to make sure, are we going to get the bylaws again to review once you finally get the wording in there? Or is, if it's a done deal, if we're going to get them again, then I can move forward. But is there a slide after this link?
No, no, there's not. We had, what?
You want another one?
No.
We can add, we can add.
I did send an email to all of council, and I just want to be sure that we're clear on that conflict of interest. When you see those three words, there's a misunderstanding with a lot of people what conflict of interest means. And I, I want that clear. And then I want to be sure, as I said in the email, that, that these boards that it's put in there, that they read the bylaws and then they attest to it like we have to sign and attest to. And then if there is that conflict of interest, that if you're on the daisies for that particular meeting, you have to leave the room until that discussion or vote has been taken.
And that, that red line stuff isn't in here on the presentation, right? So that, that is, those three, those three adjustments have been.
Other council members wanted to have a discussion as to why.
Yep. That's a good point. Everybody was copied on that, that email that was sent. And my response to that was, I'm okay with that, so I directedly to make those changes.
I did not want them to think, I wanted to be sure that we were able to discuss that those were just suggestions or recommendations.
I think they were great recommendations.
Yeah, I'm great. I'm good with that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, y'all have done an excellent job. Now, Councilman Reesack.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt the revised bylaws. I stated, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Is there a second? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Great job, great job, great job.
Last but not least, and our old business is the consideration of adoption of operating agreement with the YMCA for the new Harrisburg YMCA in Harrisburg Park. Welcome, Jim.
We got you.
My turn. Okay. I'm sorry.
So it's getting late. We need a song and dance now.
You guys want, we just read it and go next.
Two slides.
There's not too many. There's only like twenty on this one. No, no, this is, this is only six or seven. We should move along. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy to be here tonight with this presentation for consideration of adoption of the operating agreement with YMCA for the new Harrisburg YMCA located in Harrisburg Park. So description and background, in October of two thousand and eighteen, the town and Canon Memorial YMCA entered into a memorandum of understanding to work jointly with the Harrisburg YMCA to relocate their facility within Harrisburg Park. Included in that agreement, thirty-five hundred square feet of space for Parks and Recreation Staff Office Space and two full court gymnasiums, of which the town would have access for youth and adult sports programs. And continuing, continuing on from there, over the course of the next four years, town staff has worked with the YMCA to design a facility and the relating operating agreement. Excuse me. Increasing construction costs have had impacts on design. The town has decided on alternative locations for Parks and Recreation Staff Office Space, and those accommodations have been removed from the YMCH project. In addition, two full court, full court gymnasiums, high school size have been reduced in size. Currently, one full-sized high school gymnasium and one middle school-sized gymnasium for a total of three middle school-sized courts. Significant points of agreement, a summary of significant points of agreement includes, the YMCA will be responsible for construction of the facility, including, but not limited to, the building, parking lot, lighting, irrigation, landscaping, excess roads, sidewalks, curb and gutter, and monument sign. The town will maintain the excess road, including related sidewalks, streetlights, curb, and gutter. And the town will have first rights of access to YMCA gymnasiums for youth sports at no cost. The town will also have access to multipurpose space for programs and meetings at no cost. The YMCA will not compete with the town for youth and adult sports, and the town will not compete with the YMCA for activities such as day camps and after-school programs. The YMCA will extend to residents and employees of the town, membership discounts. The town will provide up to four point eight one five million dollars in cash, donation of land, assumption of related TIA improvements, and waived fees associated with the design and construction of the facility. And so here, what you have here is a YMCA site plan. If you look up in the corner, if we have a pointer on this, there we go. So here we have the amphitheater, and here is Zmax Drive. And then, so the excess road, and then if you've been in the park, know there's a little stub out there. So that road will continue up through and onto the property, and this is the property here that we have identified along with the YMCA, this little five-sided structure of land. That will be the donation of the land that the YMCA will utilize for their property.
Are we?
Yeah.
The Pepsi, or is there space between us and Pepsi?
There's a space between Pepsi's over here, actually, kind of over here, right here's Speedway Property. Or no, Pepsi's over here, that's right, right Brett? Yeah. And then also part of that is a secondary egress for emergencies and for large crowds of different things that will, actually, we've gotten preliminary, okay, from Pepsi to go, or it's from Speedway, excuse me, Speedway, to get into there and get out if we, if necessary. And again, especially like July fourth, those kind of things where parking will be utilized, that'll be an important part for us to get people out. And then here's a floor plan. This is updated. Brett just sent this to me the other day. You can see the three courts here. Office space on both sides. The pool, locker room facilities, fitness area, multi-purpose room, Brett?
Right here? What's that?
Okay. So that's it, and the entrance in the front here. And then, and there is parking here, and parking on the side of the gym here. And the excess would come up through here. The fiscal impact, the town will make a total contribution of four point eight one five million dollars. This will include donated land value at seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Offsite, off-site TIA improvements valued at eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Offsite, off-site TIA improvements valued at eight hundred and fifteen thousand. Wade fees valued at ninety-one thousand and a cash contribution of three point one seven three million dollars. The cash contribution will made a milestones, milestone one being at groundbreaking at twenty-five percent of the contribution. Milestone two, the, at the point of utility infrastructure acceptance and offsite improvements, then at that point they will get fifty, up to fifty percent. Then milestone three would be at final completion, which is their, their receipt of their CO, the remainder of the donation. The contribution, I should say. And with that, we, recommendation and suggested motions. Staff recommends approval of the operating agreement between the town and the Rowan Cabarrus YMCA for the construction, the new Harrisburg YMCA located in Harrisburg Park. And with a suggested motion to adopt the attached operating agreement between the town of Harrisburg and YMCA regarding the new Harrisburg YMCA in Harrisburg Park. And with that, we're glad to answer your questions as you provide them to us.
Before, before we take any questions for Jim, I did want to tag on to the end of it real quick. And I, I wanted to, you know, point out first and foremost that, you know, Jamie and Brett are, are back here at the YMCA. And they've been an incredible partner for us for a long time. And, and we've worked on plenty of joint projects together. I do have to say though, this was definitely our most challenging project to get from an MOU that I inherited a year ago to an operating agreement that, that we have before the council this evening. In that timeframe, we've experienced the most aggressive inflationary pressures in my lifetime. There may be people in the room that have seen it more, but in my lifetime, this is, this is the worst. So this project went from kind of a loose set of agreements in a memorandum of understanding for a YMCA that was approximately twelve million dollars to something that's twice that. And so Y had to work really hard and, and town staff had to work really hard to figure out how do we stop this project from falling through the cracks again? And it has, time and time again, it is, is seeing locations change, it's seen, you know, the project change. And, and we were really determined between the Y and ourselves to, to put together a package that we could bring here this evening. That, that's a collaborative package that both sides had to find a way to add a little bit more in and make this project a reality. So, you know, what did the Y do on, on their end, on this project from where we started a year ago to where we're at now? Well, they had to come up with twelve million dollars in, in order to make this project a reality, basically two Ys compared to what they originally had planned to do. They'd also taken over because of the way, you know, the handshake deals went down. They had to take over additional maintenance responsibility. You know, we were kind of maintaining part of it and we had to try to figure out how we were going to maintain something we didn't own and share ownership. So previously, the Y had a very small footprint where they were going to just own the building and we were going to do some parking lot stuff. And really, that just didn't, it didn't function well. So the Y stepped up, said, okay, we'll take the entire parcel. You know, so now they're taking that almost ten acres instead of what would have been a much smaller acreage. In addition to building the whole project from utilities to roof. The Y is taking that on as to where the, you know, there was kind of agreements of, well, maybe you'll do this and we'll do that. And it's just not clean. It's very hard to project manage. So a- at the end of this, the Y had to really come out of pocket quite a bit on their end to make this Y a, a reality. Would the town do? Well, I think you'll see an agreement, you know, we had to do a significant amount of heavy lifting as well. We originally had committed that four and a half million and, and and that was kind of our top end dollar. And you'll see that we had four point eight million in this agreement, which is slightly higher than that. However, the cash layout amount was, was much lower. That comes out to around three point two million. And we're able to, to, to work with the Y and, and the folks there to figure out what, what could we give, what could they give in order to really make this happen. So we ended up taking on the assumption of TIA improvements. A lot of those can work in tandem with our current transportation project. It's what we do well, right? Ys don't build roads, towns do. So it's something that, you know, we're already working on, that we can take an assumption on their end and that reduces cost on their end, but doesn't increase cost a lot on our end. So that was one thing we were able to do. We're able to front load the cash so that they didn't have additional debt service. That saves and especially in our interest environment today. You know, probably a million dollars in debt service over the life of that, if you were have to actually borrow that four million rather than, than get it from the town. We reduced our footprint in the building as far as parks and rec spaces. It's thirty-five hundred square foot, as you saw in Jim's presentation that really, yeah, they could have provided it. But it was inadequate for what we would need. So we needed to either go bigger or go smaller. So we decided, okay, let's, let's look at when we remodel this building. Potential with the library, relocation and a new library. Let's, let's repurpose our other buildings and reduce that cost so that the Y can make this a, a reality. The gyms were compromised. We still get our, our two gyms as originally intended. But not the two full-sized gyms that, that we were kind of banking on at the beginning as far as to high school gyms. So that, you know, those were compromises that, that we made on our end. But again, at the end of the day, the, the Y had to take, you know, probably eight extra acres in order to get that, put the utilities in to get to their site, maintain the entire site. The town doesn't have any maintenance responsibility. Add the additional safety entrance through the Speedway property there a- as well as just, you know, the cost of building the same building today is twice as much as it was three or four years ago. So, you know, I'm really, I'm really proud of our partnership. I know it was a lot of meetings and, you know, a lot of back and forth and a lot of emails and a lot of spreadsheets and drawings and, and sharing of information back and forth. But Brett and Jamie did a tremendous job meeting us halfway. Jim Lee and Brian worked really well to figure out what we could do on our end without, you know, blowing our budgets out of the water. So we're proud of this. Happy to take questions, comments, concerns about it. But I, I'd be remiss, we thank the Y for all the effort they put into it and our staff as well.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions or comments, maybe for Brett, whatever. How much is it going to be total? You're gonna, you guys had to raise to, to build this thing.
Yeah, great question. So we, we, just real quickly, we hired Edifice Construction last fall to help us do pre-construction and manage and everything. We just got an estimate back from them. We've, we've made a lot of decisions over the last few months. So they're estimating just a little over twenty million just for construction. So that's not including architect, other fees. So, you know, obviously, we're trying to find every way we can to save dollars and that. We'll continue to work through that over the next few months. But yeah.
Do you guys have the money right now?
Yeah, so we've got about thirteen million committed roughly. We've got a few things in the hopper that we're hopeful will come through here sooner that will, you know, really get us down the road a lot farther. And we'll be kicking off our public fundraising campaign where we hope everybody in the community will get involved at the July third and fourth celebration. So there'll be founding membership options, brick options. Room naming opportunities are available. So we still need a lot of help from the community to get there. Again, we could, we're hopefully, we get kicked way down the road here very shortly. If, if a few things work out that we've got in, in works right now.
So what'll be the date you're starting to build?
Yeah, so we're shooting really, really hard to get site work started by around that July fourth timeframe. We're getting right up to the deadline. I think we've all seen this thing. Start and stop, start and go, you know, so many times. So we really felt like it's important to show the community, we're investing heavily into this site work. We've got to build a culvert across the road, a lot of site works. I mean, it's multi-million dollars. We spend that money to get that started. Hopefully that will energize the community. You know, we felt like looking at that empathy, from that amphitheater right at the Y site, it was just too good of an opportunity to try to show the community, we're making some progress and let's rally to get this thing to the finish line.
I'm in for a break.
Yeah, awesome. Yeah, we'll talk. There we go.
It's only money. We have worked with, we have worked with Brett to help with that marketing campaign and kick it off with July third and fourth, giving them the stage and some ample opportunities to reach out to community both of those nights. And then, and then hopefully again, maybe another hit come October with our big event.
Well, I know it's hard to, it's hard to get money right now, like Rob said, this time. The only worst time this was is oh eight. So, yeah, if we can, if I can do anything to help you sell tickets or something, I'm ready, I'm in.
Sounds great.
Brett, I know there's a, a difference between what you need and where you're at. Did we pass a point of go, no go? Or is there still a go, no go?
I mean, I think, you know, we're all in at this point, you know. Something crazy were to happen or we hit a screeching halt, we'd have to have a conversation. So how do we make this thing happen in phases or whatever? But there's really not a lot to phase. I mean, you got gymnasiums, pool, fitness space. You know, there's really just the main point. So we are all in at this point.
We, we said publicly, we're at the point of no return at this point. We're going to build something up there. We're not sure what that final box is going to look like. But we believe from all the work that we've done at this point, that we can raise about five to six billion during the community phase, which is kind of that July to the end of the year. And that puts, going to put us around nineteen. We know all in with all fees, we're going to be around twenty-three. Again, so we're close. And then we got a couple of big things in the hopper. But at this point, again, we're going, we're going to do the site work in July, let everybody see that's happening. Get back and hopefully start the construction in January with the rest of the project. It's a year-long project. So that's where we expect to be. We got to get busy, you know, during the, the second half of this year to raise those funds during the community phase. And that's really what we need.
There's a lot of rich people live on that side of tracks.
So I'm not, maybe just.
Yeah, you're good. And this is Jamie Morgan, our CEO.
The next question that I've got while you're standing there is that what we're talking about today in essence is a partnership between us and you guys. We don't know what the future holds. And I went through the Mao over the weekend and I did not see any language with regards to if we found ourselves in a position where we needed to unwind this relationship, what does that look like? Is there documentational, if we had to unwind the, the partnership? I mean, I would not want to do it, but stranger things have happened. We've seen, you know, all kind of crazy stories in the news about things changing over time. So.
Yeah, I think there's language in the agreement, Lee, about, you know, having a group that works together to make sure that there's ever a conflict on anything. And if we ever got to that point, I would imagine that group would take that back to, you know, the CEO and to the council to, to make that decision.
You talk about getting our money back, Ron.
I, I'm not talking about getting our money back. What I'm saying is, okay, what we've seen, like we've seen a big name somewhere, somehow. History comes out and their background wasn't as good or as clean as what they thought. Now all of a sudden, people want to remove that name from a billboard, what have you. So now you've got a toxic relationship that one may want to disassociate from. I'm not saying the Y's name, I'm not saying the town's name. I'm just saying in the event, there's something associated in that, that we needed to separate ourselves. What does that look like when we're if we're in that position, is there language that would allow us to unravel ourselves from, or you have?
Yeah, and I, I think the, the biggest concern we, we have with that are physical assets. So that was a big part of structuring the deal over, over the past year was, I don't want to own the Y's parking lot. And they own the building and then we're married to each other in perpetuity. Who pays the streetlights? Who fixes the, the asphalt, all of that. So what we've really done is structure everything physically so that they either own it or we own it. So the driveway up to their parking lot, we own it, we maintain it. It's a public street. Once, once we cross that property line, they have it, they, they manage their own stormwater. You know, the Y is a very separate entity than the town. There is still the question of if you, if you don't want associated with each other at some reason, right? It really comes down to programming at that stand, at that point, right? If we choose not to program in the Y, there are ways in the agreement to rewrite the agreement, to terminate agreements. But they're not easy. They're, 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 like you said, they require, you know, joint board discussion and and things like that to, to talk through. But in practicality, those are just operating procedures. The, the physical assets are the tough part to, to deal with. And those have already kind of been separated out so that the Y either owns it, the town either owns it. So if we decide not to be associated with each other sometime in the future, then the Y owns the Y. We own our public assets and never the two shall cross. But we would lose significant resources to the facility in the, in the way of use of the gyms and things like that, because those will be owned and maintained by the Y. But we have first right of refusal and first opportunity to use those at all times.
Rich, could you weigh in on that? Is there, is there anything hidden in that language that would damage us in any way if we tried to unravel?
Well, there's, I mean, the agreement basically sets out the, the relationship between the parties. And actually, there's no default provisions in the agreement. So if somebody does default, it doesn't say what happens. But as Rob pointed out, the way it is done internally in the agreement is that each side has, is responsible for certain things. But what happens if, 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 if the whole thing breaks down later? There's really no, nothing in here that, that speaks to that, except that they would have their assets, the town would have, have theirs.
And those assets being they own the land, they have the building, they own everything, really, is what it means.
Well.
Yeah.
That, in terms of the physical assets, that's true.
So see, that, that's where I'm trying to get at and understand because the MOU, the MOU was an understanding. That was in two thousand and eighteen. We, we have, we have changed tremendously from what the, and I wasn't on council. You know, before it was, we were going to sell them the land. Now we're giving them the land.
Well, I think a lot had, I don't know exactly what happened. I think a lot had to do with the financial stability of America in the last few years.
Well, when, just for clarity, and I brought up the, the site plan here. So we're still selling them the land. You know, they're, they're paying seven hundred and eighty some thousand dollars, you know, roughly for that property. It's coming off of that four and a half million. So they're not going to give us seven eighty and we turn around and give it back to them. We're just deducting it from the four and a half.
But, but the terminology says. The terminology doesn't say.
So I think the, the original agreement was the town would give cash and Lee, I think Lee and I are the only ones pretty much part of that original. So would be the cash and then we would have to write a check back for the land and it was going to be a much smaller parcel. Just because again, like we talked about, the town was going to maintain the, the parking lots and things like that. So it has evolved quite a bit. We've had a whole you know, pretty large change in council. We've had a merger, change in staffing. So there's been a lot of changes in both parties since its agreement. Plus you throw in COVID and construction, it has very much evolved.
But I, I don't want us, I want us to be sure we have our eyes dotted and our teams crossed. Because this is supposed to be a long-term thing. I won't be here thirty years from now, you know, but it needs to be right, right? But when I look in here, the only thing I see about being renegotiated is a discount fee for the staff and the residents. I don't, so to me, this, this contract that's come up, is the contract going forward? Is that correct?
That, that's it. And there, and so there is not a, a provision and, and purposely for a practical reason. So if you look at the site plan, you know, the, the the blue and the pink areas will be owned, operated, maintained by the Y. And they will have to construct from the amphitheater down significant roadway, waterline, sewer, storm, a culvert. And under that culvert will have enough room for us to have walking trails that link the north and the south of that. That will, you know, that, that white area there will all be owned by the town. It'll be given to the town at the end of the project. Everything in the, in the two, the pink and the blue area will be theirs. The own, the, the Y, there's no way for the Y to back out of this agreement, once we've entered into it. The only scenario would be is if the town. The only scenario would be is if the town says, we don't, we're not going to continue with this. And so we're not going to program in, in this building anymore. They will say the, the other option is, let's, let's think about this from a, um, from a practical standpoint. Our other option is let's say we don't want to deal with the Y anymore. We, we come to the future and, um, the Y has sent out a terrible tweet and we have canceled the Y. Um, so, so the Y is no longer somebody that we want to, want to, want to associate with. Um, and we have joint ownership in the building. We can't cut the baby in half, right? So i- i- at that point, if we don't want to deal with the Y, it's not like we can then enter and use the gym and I, I mean,
But the point is, if it gets sold, whatever reason, whenever, when that building gets sold, they get all the money. I just want to be sure I understand that. I mean, that is that, I mean, that's.
I don't think that's right, no.
Now, we, we, we have rights to use the building in perpetuity per the agreement.
They would own it, so they would have the right to sell it. There's nothing in here that says they can't sell it.
There you go.
Uh, so that, that, that is true.
But I haven't seen very many wives do that, have you, Rich?
But it's, it's not a matter of have you seen it, are we protected? It's protecting.
We should get what we put in it.
I, I mean, I was wondering if there was not a specific family's call as well, but.
I guess there's technically a scenario where the Y could sell the building and we, that new owner would have to give us access because of our.
Could sell that whenever the board thirty years from now, forty years to say, you know what? I can sell this and I can go build a better building somewhere else.
I, I, I don't think that.
I don't think they will.
And the, and the way it has, wherever such, I've been here twelve years and they're having such a hard time getting the money. I don't think that once it's built, I think it's going to be what they really want.
Yeah, and, and maybe not.
And it's in a great place, it's a perfect place.
But, but I think that's an easy enough, be, because the, because the, the chances are so low, I think that's an easy enough thing to ask the the Y to say, are you opposed to a sales clause that if you were to not be the owner, that the town has right of first refusal and that we would get a certain amount of the proceeds of a sale? I mean, I could, I'm speaking, you know, out of turn, obviously, gentlemen, but I mean, that's been.
I'm just trying to understand, now is the time to ask these questions, right? This is the contract again, right? So that's why I'm asking them. And please tell me again, the thirty-five hundred square feet went away, where did it go? Who's got, who, is it there at all?
Reduce the footprint.
And tell me again, what was the conversation I had with one of y'all in the past week about, we were at two full courts and now we're at three half courts?
So, so the original agreement officially just had two full gymnasiums. Um, you know, we used the West Cabarrus Y as the model, so it was, it, that's a high school court with two cross courts that are very, very small. If you've been in there, you, they're not, you know, the five and six, seven, eight year olds can play on that. Um, you know, that was re- really the original idea. Um, as we've talked through it with Jim and the town staff, you know, I think their, their usability goes up with middle school courts. So we've really, you know, I guess reallocated, moved around to make it where it's one high school court that with cross courts of middle school, so it's much wider than like the West Cabarrus Y is. And then a third court that would be, you know, also a middle school court. So there's no micro sized courts, you know, that you can only play three, four, five, six year olds. There's three courts that can play middle school and whatnot. What did you figure out? Ninety some percent of your participants were middle school or lower. So.
Um, part of the, the, part of the give and take was that at that point with that thirty-five hundred square feet and, and three full size high school course, the cost of the construction project was thirty-five million. And so it really became, we're just became to scale for, for YMCA our size to not be able to do it. And so we kind of got together and said, now is our time. If it's ever going to happen, it's now. What can we do together to make this work? And I will say there are YMCA municipal partnerships kind of all over the country that were, this is a very unique one, one of the best ones I've ever seen in terms of how we've got to this point. But really, it was just to scale the project when construction costs went to four hundred plus a square foot. It was just like, I mean, even this build here is fifty thousand square foot. We'd much rather it be seventy thousand square foot, but again, that's just part of that give and take to get it to where it's something that we felt like was doable. And even now, again, to get to twenty-four million. I mean, so we're talking about, obviously, your party and it's for me and we're talking about all in at twenty-four million to get, for us to get to twenty-four million is a stretch, un beyond belief that you can think for us.
The, is there any, has there ever been any other YMCA's that, I don't know, that ever go belly up or bankrupt or, or, or or sell out? My mother-in-law goes to the one in Concord, swims every morning.
Well, the demographics suggest this Y is going to look a lot like the one in Concord, at Afton Village. This is going to be one of the most awesome YMCA's in the state of North Carolina. Uh, I, I mean, anything could happen. We never say never. Right? But the YMCA has been here in America since eighteen fifty-one.
But each Y, someone told me today, each Y is independent of its sale.
So the Row Inc. Bears YMCA is one YMCA that has six branches. This branch is one of those six branches. So we have stand, we have strength and numbers. If we were standing alone by ourselves and one thing, bad thing, then you were a little more vulnerable. But by us having the six branches in the two counties.
Right.
Uh, that's one of the reasons we kind of came together.
But it wouldn't hurt to add the.
An operating agreement.
There are several things we could add to this agreement that would, I think, do that, or could help to do it. One of them, Rob just mentioned, would be a right of first refusal if they do sell. Or, you know, there's something, the town would have the first right to buy it at whatever price uh, they were going to sell it at to some, to some third party. You could have that, or it could be that, um, you know, that, that there's some other way in which the town would re- recover or, uh, its investment in that building, whether, um, uh, certainly you can't divide the building in two, you can't separate. I suppose you could, could, um, separate the land from the building. You can have a ground lease or something like that. And maybe do something like that. But I think the main thing I've been thinking about as I, you know, was listening to the discussion. And after having seen the agreement, you know, when, when it was in my packet, is that, um, probably there needs to be some language in there that ties the, um, the town's investment to, to, um, to the Y having all the money, which is the one thing I heard tonight that they, that the, that party, what you're going to do is, is try to raise it over the rest of this year.
And, and that's how we do.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, that doesn't surprise me, but, but you may not want it. Your, uh, amount you put into it and the transfer of the land may want to be tied to them being fully, um, um, functional on this project in terms of the financing, whatever that takes.
Because we're doing that with the train station, right, Rob?
We're doing that with this as well. There's, there's benchmarks, the thing you do achieve, in- including final CO.
But, but, well, the, there, there are benchmarks marked, but they're not tied to anything that the Y does or doesn't do. That's what I'm saying.
They're, they're construction benchmarks, so they're.
Right.
Um, completion of the building now, not necessarily that they finance it or raise it a certain way, but uh, they'd have to build the building before getting, getting the money. Yeah, um, but I think there's, I think there is a, I mean, it's, it's not something, I guess, that, uh, was on the front of my mind, but there, there is a question of why sells the building? What happens? If, if you're not prohibited from selling, um, is there a clause that needs to be in there that protects the initial investment? And I, you know, I'm hearing the Y say that that's not a problem with, you know, Conaples has been there a hundred years. This is going to be a, a, a great branch. Y has been around for a hundred and seventy-five years, so, um, you know, it's not something scares them and it protects us and that's an easy enough thing.
Why was there road improvements required for, I guess I'm confused with that as well.
There were several things required in the TIA, some of which, um, became economic or environmentally, um, not permissible. Um, but if you remember, you know, discussion at the beginning, this Y was going to be much bigger, uh, as well. So there are tra- I mean, Y's generate a lot of traffic. So it's not just your specific site. You're going to have some all along forty-nine, um, that were triggered. So from veterans, basically to Caldwell was the study area. And once you push that traffic out, you, you saw what impacts it would have. Um, there was the option to go back and reduce those counts and redo a TIA. But based on the, the minimal cost for the improvements that may or may not be needed out of Roberta, uh, we thought it was, you know, better economically for us since we're going to be taking on those improvements. Save that twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars that you would do on a updated TIA. And we're already doing engineering design and studies in those areas to do traffic improvements. We'd be able to lump all that in. That's some of the cost savings that I was talking about at the beginning. Where it's like tho- those may or may not come to fruition when we get to detailed design. Um, but we wouldn't even know if those are viable now, based on the new footprint and the new trip numbers without spending tens of thousands of dollars to prove that.
And here again, once this contract is signed, there's nothing that goes and changes it. The only thing will be every five years, the discount rates are the things that will be renegotiated.
Outside of the provisions to change, I mean, there are some, some, there, there is a method by which both sides can come back and change things, but there's not any, other than, uh, what they chart, what the discount rates are. There's no, uh, additional asks. Now, if they were to expand and add another gym, they could come back and um, talk to us about what that partnership looked like, or, um, it might be something that, you know, we just, uh, use and, uh, because they've built it. Um, we would use it just like we build things and, and the Y uses it, um, our parks, our, our paths, et cetera. Um, but no, there's nothing that I would anticipate changing in that or being up for negotiation other than rates.
Rich, is there a path forward tonight with giving them approval, but still adding that? How does that work? I mean, or is it, we have to add it and then approve it?
I did not draft this, so I can't really. So one way you could do is you're, you're in agreement with, you're doing, dealing with the Y. And once you vote on that, leave it, you know, to, um, maybe it's down the target to, to make changes to the agreement.
Would that be an amendment to the existing agreement or?
Cause I wouldn't be signing anything tonight. If that's the case, we would just be approving. Um, Brett, Jamie, y'all have any questions, concerns about those suggestions? Need to mull over that?
I think it's been a process and this is, sounds like just another step in that process to get there. So again, we've been all in from the beginning and you all have, so whatever it takes.
So if we give you the approval, is that enough for tonight or do you have to have a signed contract?
I, 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 I mean, I, I agree. Let's work out these things and make sure that everybody feels great about it. We want to go in, make sure that, that. So yes, we can, we can definitely.
So this would not delay you, right?
So. So, so what we typically do on, on contracts where they, you may have minor, um, changes is um, we'll approve things in substantial conformity with, um, what's here. We'll give the, your law director, um, the ability to make those changes. Um, articulate what those changes are going to be. He'll draft that if they're in substantial conformity, you'll then, um, kind of, uh, reiterate that approval at a later date. Making sure that it, uh, it did match what your statements are. That's a path forward. Um, short of that, I, I think that's about it. I mean, it's.
We can approve it by next, by next meeting?
Well, you can definitely approve the final draft at the next meeting, but you can approve this, um, agreement now with kind of the amendments that you were talking about of, um, put in a sales, um, provision, a right of first refusal, both of which I didn't hear any objection to. I didn't hear anything else, uh, in the agreement. That, that you wanted to add.
And nothing was based on, so let's say we get to December and unfortunately you haven't raised the money where we listed.
Yeah, um, we wouldn't pay them anything.
Well, Rich said there needed to be something with regards to construction milestones.
Yeah, I mean, that's in there. I'll, Rich and I'll go back through that, but I mean, the utility infrastructure acceptance like is on the board. You, that's fifty percent of the total, twenty-five percent at final CO. Um, there's twenty-five percent at groundbreaking, but groundbreaking, we're gonna, um, agree on what a groundbreaking is. So, uh, you know, I'm assuming if we're not moving forward, we're not having a groundbreaking and we're not going to pay.
Moving forward for another six months to try to raise this, are we, is it just going and going and going?
I think what I'm hearing is, is there a sunset clause? I- if they never meet it. And so if you don't meet milestone one. They don't get any money, but do you have ten years to, to, to get to milestone one?
Don't we have a plan with?
They're already talking about this year.
But, right, but don't we, didn't we decide to do that? We were going to maybe take our money and do this. Let's do this early. So that's going to, that's, that's, that's going to play on us, what we do, because our money has to be spent by. So see, this is very important.
Yeah, so, so I'd have to look through the agreement and see if it puts a, a date, which I'm I'm not sure if it has a, a date or a timeframe, but our conversations have, uh, centered around the Jamie said it, we got up here, the January construction date, right? So we're going to start this by January because they need to get it done before, um, we need to spend the money.
Well, I think, I, I, I think that they're going out and getting clumps of money. So this is just another clump of money that they want to have in their pockets so they keep on getting, wanting to get more. I agree with they, they said they're going to break ground, you know, this year. So they, they're sort of banking on what we can give them so they can put this in their pocket and keep moving because they need about eight more million. I'm not saying we shouldn't cover ourselves. I'm just saying that at some point in time, they need to have the go ahead with our covered. With, if something happens, we get our money back, but there, that's the way donations do. They get this clump and then this club and that club, they, they feel comfortable because they got so much. I think that's how we're, is that how it works, Brett?
Can I make a motion that I asked attorney to come up with what he feels is appropriate based on our conversations tonight? And return to us next month with that agreement?
Well, what I was trying to do is get a path forward for these guys for tonight, where we can right, give them approval to move forward, but we're, Rich is going to come back with the documentation of the contract that has everything that we.
Yeah, what, what I have written is, uh, approval contingent upon a sales clause, a reimbursement clause and a sunset clause as written by Rich.
Yeah, are you okay with that?
Yes.
You could um, in the motion, put the basic financial terms. They would tell them to agree into, and that would seem useful. And how that, you know, that is, you're gonna enter into.
The exact language of it would not be finalized until, uh, after tonight.
Um, right.
I mean, you can say, you leave it to the town manager and the town attorney to, to finalize the language in the agreement with the Y. But you all go ahead and approve that you're, you're gonna go forward with them. Um, on, on a deal that's based on these, uh, these types of, of numbers that you've seen in this presentation.
So Mr. Lee, will that? Definitely designate that thirty-one seventy-three from ARPA?
So we've met the, the criteria for that?
We have met that, and we have until the second thirty-first point six patches.
So just because we give that to them as a contribution that can, or as long as whatever the terminology is, that meets that requirement?
It does.
Nothing has to be construed.
Well, it does for us to actually give them, based on the milestone.
Okay, and then Rich is gonna write that part in there to ensure that we have construction milestone. All right, are you?
I'm good, I'm good, y'all good? Well, I'm good.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still a little unclear how we're reading the.
Motion to move forward?
So, so I, I would suggest a motion to approve the contract contingent upon a sales uh, clause, a reimbursement clause. And a sunset clause to be added by Rich, and. Have anything that you?
That's fine with me. The one thing I've, the other thing I've been s- thinking about here is when do you all need the, the property transferred into your name? Does that, or does that matter?
I think soon, and like Ian Mallory, probably sooner than later.
Uh, smoothly, I know, um, Jim's on the flat tonight for your reviews, so if you have that. Right there.
We just got that survey back today.
Yeah.
And Brian has the chance.
I got it.
Brian can deal with Rich on legal side.
Land transfer wouldn't be till the next meeting.
So I would, uh, I would put in something about when we transfer title and, you know, and how that would tie in with these other um, matters, so.
So we're not gonna transfer title until we're through with your contract approvals?
Right, till the contract signed, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Do you remember that? I shouldn't.
So I would. So I, I, I would, I would, I would recommend a uh. Okay.
Just the reimbursement language. I mean, is it like percentage in, percentage out? Like if it's, we contribute ten percent if they sell it, we get ten percent back?
Well, I think the. Yeah, so that's something that, you know, Rich and I'll talk about it, the numbers, but I imagine um, that the Y be comfortable. And it's something that we've gotta talk to them about, saying, okay, we're putting in um, you know, hard dollars on this, roughly four million. And that if they were to sell it, we would have right of first refusal and be reimbursed four million uh, on the sale, and. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, but if they sell it twenty years from now, they're gonna sell it forty. So if we give them ten percent now, which is four million, twenty years, we get eight million back. We get our percentage back.
Can we get money back if we pay a little ARPA money? Can we get money back?
I don't know, we're in deep waters here. Uh, I said, I don't know, we're in deep waters uh, right now, so um.
Can you just do like adjusted for inflation?
Well, let, let, let me, Rich and, and the Y discuss that provision and bring it, bring it back. I mean, I think, I think we have to bring this back.
Yeah, that is a good point, though.
But uh, um, you know, I don't know what, what encumbers the Y on, on something like that. Um, so I'd wanna talk to them about it, but my, my recommendation, if, if there are any more questions, I'll change my, uh. But so, um, my recommendation would be for the town to approve the contract to make a total contribution of four point eight one five million. Um, as stated, with um, contingent upon the uh. Sales, reimbursement, sunset, and transfer of title um, provisions being added to the contract by Rich.
So motion on.
Motion has stayed.
There's a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
So let, let me just say that I heard that there's a sports complex that may be looking at property in the area. And so that's very interesting. No, not the Y, a sports complex, it right in the area, so therefore um. It makes it interesting.
Different base. Well, that completes all business, and we only have one item. No.
You wish.
We're not doing. First item for new business consideration.
No jokes are funny after nine.
True story. I think we already talked about some of this too, but this is consideration of adoption of ordinance prohibiting unmuffled engine compression brakes within town limits.
Good evening again.
Hey Zach.
Good to see you. Um, so this is a um, an ordinance that would um, prohibit the. Unmuffled engine compression brakes within the town limits, specifically uh, NC forty-nine. And we'll, uh, we'll get and show what that is, but um, there's no prohibition currently against these breaks, and so as the uh, captain said. Um, enforcement is a little difficult. Uh, now, there's probably gonna be challenges to enforce it anyway, but you do need an ordinance to enforce it. Um, NC DOT does have a process, uh, very detailed, which I've shared in the uh, in the agenda packet for you. Um, to um, essentially allow communities to adopt this. And I'm not gonna go through the, everything on that list, but it begins with uh, an ordinance and it ends with uh, Mallory's wonderful crew putting the signs up. Uh, and then the captain actually catching someone doing this. Um, so that's how it works. Is that for Zach being very brief? So the action requested is for the town council to consider adoption of an ordinance to prohibit. Unmuffled engine compression brakes along NC forty-nine within the Harrisburg town limits. Staff recommendation is to approve the ordinance. Any questions?
No, but I think that if you put the sign up, even though, Rob and I talked about, about like what Ron asked. The captain tonight, if I'm going through the town with my motorhome and I see that, I'm gonna not use that brake. Not knowing I can't get a ticket for it. Uh, that's, that's how I think.
That is the element.
I wasn't really, I really wasn't worried about arresting anybody. It's just that. It's the sound and the aggravation. The guy from Arby's called me, says somebody hit that brake and, and, and. He like turned around, he knows, so what, what was going on? I said, well, I hear it on my back porch and it scares you. So I, I wasn't really worried about somebody getting a ticket. That sign up those sides of forty-nine, I think, that would really. I don't think they would use it, and so that's what I'm saying. And it's, it's a no cost.
So, you know, when I, when I read before I read the whole thing and it said unmuffled engine. I thought about all the cars that go on Stallings Road and they're downgrading their engines and they're racing them. Are we sure?
This is, this is completely different.
It is completely different. I mean, right, but to me, it's the same principle when I hear these cars.
When you hear a tractor trailer put on, you really hear it.
Okay. But we can, I hear we can enforce those either.
Well, with the counter set tonight, it has to see it, enforce it.
I, I think what the captain said earlier was, um, if there's an option to not use it and you're using it. That's the, that's the issue. This is not for safety, or if there's a, a, a real reason to use.
Well, there's an exception that if, that it would, this ordinance would not apply. In the event that you have to use it for an emergency. That's what the cabinet was talking about, was emergencies. He can't tell by just listening to it, whether it's an emergency or not. He'd have to see what went on out there. If the guy, you know, driving the truck would, would have to, you know, use that brake to be able to avoid an accident. Or, or hitting a pedestrian, pedestrians or something like that. That's, that's, uh, and that's built into this ordinance. But that's what he's saying from a enforcement point, point of view, that he'd have to see, you know, what, what the situation was. To know if they actually violated it or not. But I think, I think Rick has a good point in that um. And that's why they put up the signs, not only just to make people aware, but also to hopefully.
Not to use it unless you have to.
That, most of these ordinances are all the same.
Um, they're all through Florida. I think Midland has one.
That, that sign is on Kannapolis Parkway.
Is it?
In Kannapolis, that sign you see right there, so. Um, yeah, there was a neighborhood literally right underneath that sign and they were.
Captain Meesmer staring at you like Mike Myers. Oh, he's back.
Oh, he is back.
Were, were you in the empty room?
I'm always right.
He heard us talking about him.
I drove all the way to my place, there's a sign down there to make clear.
To apply your brakes?
So there are much on the floor?
I'll, I'll put a motion on the floor.
Thank you for a second.
Sorry.
All in favor? Uh, any opposed?
Thirty seconds.
The best for last.
Who has Henry?
Who has Henry? His father? I'm worried about my dogs at this point. This will be painless. I see the audience stayed. Um. So a little bit of um, a quick final one to wrap us up, but I'm presenting tonight the water purchase contract with the city of Concord. Uh, a little bit of background, the town entered this agreement with the city of Concord back in two thousand eight to buy uh, potable water from the city of Concord. Addendum two will expire uh, June of this year, and addendum three is before you for consideration. The addendum three will make available to Harrisburg two million gallons per day, which is up from a previous amount of one point six million. It does not change the take or pay amount of seven hundred thousand gallons per day. We use well over that. Um, it will remove the provision for contractual storage capacity. We don't longer need that with the construction of tank two. So we have one point six million gallons of storage within our um, town system. It will extend the contract period for only one year, which is um, to expire in twenty twenty-four. Typically, we would go for a little bit longer. The previous addendums were like three and five years respectively. We're not doing that this year because um, there are some other things we wanna look into before we further extend this contract. Um, uh, further, it will maintain the maximum operation and maintenance increase at four percent. I've got a chart showing our average consumption from Concord showing in about one point four two five million gallons per day. This is just from Concord. We have wells and we also purchased water from the city of Charlotte, so. But the, the biggest chunk, let's say like ninety-five percent of our water, ninety percent is from Concord. Um, what we're gonna do next, so why we're only extending this a year, we wanna work with the city of Concord to. Um, and within our own consultants and using the budget that council has voted for us to. Identify alternate water resources to alleviate the dependency on the city of Concord. The one-year extension will allow us time to do that and um, also maintain the clean and reliable water. And then we will tap into the WAC master plan that is ongoing. Um, and, and share some insight into the county-wide demand and availability. So if you please, I propose a motion to execute the contract with city of Concord, extending the town's water purchase agreement through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-fourth. Any questions or concerns?
The only question is that the removal of the contractual storage from the tank, did that reduce our costs from them at all?
So I, I think it did, but I couldn't find the specific amount and it wasn't clear on the bill. So I wanted to have that number to share with you tonight, but I just, I couldn't find the exact number.
But it should.
It should have. Um, we weren't, we haven't been paying it since we built that tank, so.
You'd have to get into some old numbers, but i- if memory recalls, uh, it's about twenty-five thousand a month.
Uh, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yeah, yeah, it is significant costs, so it's, you know, I think it saves the town about three, three hundred thousand a year.
That's good, that's one question.
Okay.
Move for, move for approval there.
I should check for you, some for, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, I did have a couple action items written down, um, the replacement of the flags at Veterans. Um, inquiry on the pedestrian light at the middle school into Bridgepoint. I know that's some DOT involvement there. Um, and then a request to meet with our department. Those were the three I had, what did I miss?
Um, the big one with the YMCA follow-up stuff, so I, I, I've got that, and, and then uh. Um, there were some uh, clarity questions on Harmony and when the uh, um, signal and pond stuff would, would be done. For the most part, but I think there was some.
Yeah, whether it's thirty.
Yeah, more specifics, I think we will follow up with.
And there is no need for a closed session this evening, so with that is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, thank you.